Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the fifth and final day of Public Hearing 25, which is addressing the operation of the NDIS for First Nations people with disability in remote and very remote communities. I thank everybody who's made arrangements at the last minute to start at 9:30 instead of 10, including our witnesses for today. I'll ask Commissioner Mason to make the acknowledgement of the country.
Thank you, Chair. We acknowledge the Ardu people as the original inhabitants and traditional owners of the land on which we gather today. Mabantuwa, also known as our springs. We acknowledge their ongoing spiritual and cultural connection to Mabantuwa. We acknowledge and pay our deep respect to elders, past and present. We extend that respect to all First Nations people and acknowledge their enduring connection to land, sky, seas and waterways. Finally, we pay our deep respect to First Nations people here today and who are following this public hearing online on the mainland and on islands, including in the Torres Strait, especially elders, parents, young people and children who have disabilities. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason. Yes, Mr. Griffin.
Good morning, Mr. McNorton and Miss Papadopoulos. I want to pick up this morning with looking at a document called the Thin Market Interim Evaluation Report. It appears in Hearing Bundle C at tab 65 and has the reference ctd.800.0032.0596. Can indicate, Miss Papadopoulos, are you familiar with that report?
Yes.
And is it the case that that report was produced by the NDIA?
That's correct.
And in particular by the Research and Evaluation Branch?
Yes.
And it's dated November 2021?
Yes.
From my reading of that report, it appears to take an approach of trying to address market failures by looking at three possible options, which I wish to discuss with you. And they are firstly, market facilitation; secondly, coordinated funding proposals, known as CFPs; and thirdly, direct commissioning.
That's correct.
Can I take you to market facilitation? In plain English, what does that mean?
Market facilitation means helping markets behave the way that we hope they would naturally. So it's about on what we call the demand side, which is the people who have the money to spend, making sure that they are supported to be effective consumers. So they understand their plan, they understand the options available to them as to what to purchase, they are supported by support coordinators or others to be able to operate that way in the market. And then on the supply side, working with the provider network to make the opportunities clear in that particular location, which can be about sharing data and highlighting, for example, the number of people in a particular place who need a certain type of support and packaging up that opportunity and sharing it and encouraging providers to be open to that opportunity, to understand that opportunity. And finally, it's about connections between different players in the market. So for example, we create networks of support coordinators to meet each other and establish relationships with each other so they can work better together for their own participants and to share opportunities across groups of participants. We establish relationships between support coordinators and providers in the market, including providers from adjacent markets nearby. So we try to help everybody get to know each other. And through those sorts of connections, we often see that the market is able then to more naturally match supply and demand.
Thank you. So a successful market facilitation would improve the connections between providers and participants?
Yes.
That's almost in a nutshell what you hope to achieve?
Yes.
What is coordinated funding proposals, CFPs?
A coordinated funding proposal is a method that we developed within our branch. It involves identifying a group of participants in a particular place who all have a similar need for a similar type of support. And we work with the support coordinators who represent that group of people. And we enable the support coordinators to lead a process where they write up a request for quote, which will say, for example, there are 20 participants in Catherine who all need an orthotics assessment and ongoing supports. We are looking for a provider with these particular characteristics. And they invite usually three or four providers of their choice who might be coming from the nearest regional centre, for example, to submit a quote as to how they would deliver those services to those people, including their service delivery model, how many times they'd visit, how many hours they'd spend, but also the cost. And the support coordinators can also specify other requirements, which they usually do, for example, around cultural competency, experience, working with particular kinds of participants and so on. And then support coordinators, in consultation with the participants who they represent, will make a choice as to which provider or providers to engage and go ahead with that particular quote. And then when the providers deliver the services, they actually draw down from plans in the normal way.
So in effect, if you've got multiple participants with a similar need, in the case you described, an orthotic device, their support coordinators can pool the funding in order to purchase those services or products?
Yeah, it appears as if the funding is pooled. So for example, in describing or setting out in the request for quote how many participants there are and the funding that they have available in their plans, the providers can see the opportunity as an aggregate opportunity. However, when it comes to the service delivery, the funding is not physically pooled, it is drawn down from plans in the normal way.
Yes. And is it hoped by adopting that approach that those participants will get the service or product they require more quickly? It might otherwise be the case?
Yes.
And it might be cheaper because there are multiple people receiving the product or service than it would be if it was done on an individual basis?
Certainly, that's the case around travel because travel can then be split among the participants involved.
For coordinated funding proposals to work, it seems that the support coordinator is the crucial person or persons?
Yes. In the CFPs that we've run so far, we have always worked with support coordinators. But that doesn't mean that others couldn't use the technique. And we're in the process of hoping to release a toolkit. And that could be used by parents or participants themselves or other community groups or anybody who wants to represent a group of participants to follow that process.
So if there were three families in a remote community that thought that members of their family had a similar requirement, the NDIA would assist them to understand how this process of CFPs would work?
Yes, and that's part of what we're thinking through with our communications around releasing this toolkit. How might it be used? And how can we make sure that people who want to use it, that we can adequately support them? We'd really like to just be a light-touch enabler of it. We'd like it to be fairly self-explanatory.
What is a toolkit in that context? What does it look like?
It has a step-by-step guide as to how to put together a CFP. So for example, it explains step one, identify who the group of people are and what the support is that you're looking to purchase. Step two, decide what the roles and responsibilities will be, who will make the assessment and so on. And then how to choose the providers that you want to approach and what's involved in assessing and so on. And it also includes some templates for the various documents.
So the first stage would be making that toolkit accessible to people?
Yes, that's what we're working through at the moment.
What happens if the target audience aren't able to sufficiently understand the toolkit? What assistance can they seek to better understand what this is all about?
Well, this is why we haven't rushed into releasing it because I wouldn't want to create an expectation around a process that's available, but I don't have sufficient resources within the agency to support that to happen. So we're being pretty careful with being prepared for that before we roll it out.
I won't hold you to any specific dates, Miss Papadopoulos. What's your expectation of the rollout of the program you've just described?
I'm hoping before the end of this year.
And to reiterate the point you just made, you're very conscious, to use my words, of making sure that it's carefully thought through and designed before release?
Yes.
And is one of the reasons because you would expect that there might be a demand on the NDIA for resources to understand how to operate that toolkit? And you want to have those in place?
It's a consideration that we have with any policy change, practice change or new initiative that we release to ensure that the implementation will be smooth. At the moment, my team facilitates all the CFPs that we've run, which is about a dozen that we've run so far. And the support coordinators who we have worked with to date have, in the main, really liked the process. And some of them have taken that toolkit and are independently doing it themselves the second time because they've learnt the first time. So I think there's a lot of potential for a broad appeal of the toolkit, but some support will be needed from us.
And did I understand from your evidence that the cost to the NDIA of providing support for people that are trying to use the toolkit would be a budgetary cost which would have to compete with all the other budgetary demands of the NDIA?
It's very likely that it could be met within the existing budget of my team. We would just have to be able to forecast the likely impact on our resources in our team.
And finally, in relation to the toolkit, will it be delivered in different languages, particularly in RACs of First Nations communities?
Look, I think the learnings from this week's evidence and other cultural discussions, cultural competency discussions we've been having internally, yes, certainly means we have to think about the accessibility of all our materials. And this would be one of, yes, similar, subject to the same considerations.
So in listening to the evidence being given this week, has it been impressed upon you at least that the question of language and cultural considerations in certain circumstances of the difference between a program such as this being effective and not being effective?
Yes, it's a really key part of effectiveness. I would agree with that.
To what extent has your group thought through issues of language and culture as of today in respect to the proposed toolkit?
The last version I saw of the draft communications plan was really around who might the potential audiences be and how do we imagine our users might use this? And who are we actually pitching it to? And so we're still talking about that. And if we do think it's appropriate that the toolkit is used directly by families or people in Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities who don't have English as a first language, then absolutely language translations would become important. But at the same time, I would hesitate to commit that it's an appropriate toolkit for the participants themselves. I don't want to, again, offer something that seems too complex. So it's only if we could simplify it to the point and make sure and test and consult so that, to make sure that it's an appropriate toolkit to offer to that audience group before we then go into how to make that work.
If I can come back to the Thin Markets Evaluation Report. I mentioned there were three approaches. The third approach was direct commissioning.
Yes.
What does that mean?
Direct commissioning in the NDIS context means, similar to CFPs, when we identify a group of participants who all have an unmet need of some kind. But instead of a CFP, we actually take it a step further. And we can actually physically pool the funding and procure a provider or a group of providers to deliver the service through a contract with the NDIA. And the money for that support comes out of the plans and is used to pay the contract.
So as the words "direct commissioning" imply, that's a contract between the NDIA and a provider or a group of providers?
Yes.
How is direct commissioning different if it is from block funding?
How is direct commissioning different from block funding? It is closer to block funding than individualized plans. So in many ways, it seeks to mimic many of the benefits of block funding.
Just pausing there. What do you say the benefits of block funding are?
Certainty of funding, certainty of a timeframe for delivery. So these contracts are usually multi-year contracts. And also more certainty around the numbers of participants and the profile of service delivery.
And when you say certainty, is it also the case that block funding provides some security? People know what's going to be there for a certain period of time?
Yes.
I interrupted what you were saying previously?
No, you didn't. That's fine.
Do you want to continue with that as to talking about the differences between direct commissioning and block funding?
So in our first two trials of direct commissioning, one in Tasmania and one in the ACT, the arrangements were not that similar to block funding. It did address many of those areas of certainty. For example, how many participants and where they were. But each, the terms of those two contracts, the providers agreed that each request for service essentially would come participant by participant as they were ready. And we would offer the job package essentially for that participant to the provider. And they'd accept it and commence service delivery for that person. And they may or may not get a certain number of participants. So we didn't necessarily commit to that. And that was appropriate in both of those settings. And that was really a suitable model for the providers who we worked with there. In contrast, in the APY Lands, which is the third place that we've trialled direct commissioning, we've set up a different kind of funding model which more appropriately meets the needs of that situation.
In what particular respects in the NPY Lands did you decide to have a different approach?
We had consulted a lot in terms of the design of that commissioning model. So we understood the needs of providers in that area. And we worked really closely with the community and with all our stakeholders to design something that was going to work in that area. And that was really important because we didn't want to have a high risk of going out to procurement and not having an offer that was attractive enough essentially. So the funding model that we came up with there actually started from the position of what would the service look like? And in this case, it's a service for social community and civic participation support, which is, for example, people participating in activities. So whatever they're interested in, hunting, fishing, sewing, helping them with their daily lives. And we knew that a drop-in centre-style approach would be most appropriate. And so we worked backwards from a costing model of how much would it cost to run a service that looks like that for this many people for an average number of hours? And then we split that into how much is the effective contribution from each person's plan?
In respect to the NPY Lands, have you done any preliminary evaluation as to whether the approach you've adopted is being successful?
The APY Lands direct commissioning is only really starting service delivery over the last few months. So it's too early.
Too early to turn. Before I leave the evaluation report, we've gone through market facilitation, coordinated funding proposals and direct commissioning. Those were the three approaches that were adopted to deal with market failure. Did you consider other approaches and reject them? And if so, can you tell the commission what those other approaches you considered were?
The material that was available to my team as we started to develop our operational approach essentially came down to those three methods. So there's a number of more policy-style documents, our market approach document, our market enablement framework, and some reports that we worked on with DSS in 2019 that aimed to cover the spectrum of all the different levers that we can use. And that was really important. But the task of my branch was to turn that into an operational approach with processes and methods. And so those three methods essentially summarise much of what you'll see in the more theoretical material that precedes it.
So you looked at all the options available and did you then reduce them down to these three approaches largely?
Yes.
Can I ask, please, when you allocate the cost of the pooling arrangement to individual plans, how is that done?
The average cost per participant...
I'm thinking about the APY Lands.
Yeah, so that average cost is worked out per participant. And then we have a look at the plans. In the APY Lands example, most of the participants already had sufficient funding in their plans to cover that effective contribution. The ones that didn't had their plans adjusted up so that they would make that contribution. And others who had more than that contribution retain whatever is left over in their plan.
And what information was conveyed to the participants themselves or their nominational families about what was happening?
We used all the community resources available to us in that community. So remote community connectors, NPY Women's Council, so the support coordinators to talk to participants. And any participant who wanted to opt out has been able to opt out. There were a handful who did.
And did anybody opt out?
Yeah, I think there were around three or four.
And how many plans were involved in the pooling in the end?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. And a total cost of?
I'm not sure the total cost, but I can take that on notice.
Thank you.
Can the NDIS consideration of what approach to take to remote and very remote First Nations communities? Have the organisation undertaken various projects and trials?
Yes.
And those trials were essentially thin market trials, looking at what policy settings would be, whether we could use incubators, things such as that?
I've never heard the term incubators used.
There were policy considerations taken into account?
Yes.
How did you go about designing the trials that the organisation undertook?
Yeah, so I'll just clarify the term trials in this context. We use to refer to the group of projects that was agreed as a result of the Disability Minister's decision in December 2019, where all states and territories agreed that we should try a more innovative approach to market intervention. And they all nominated a number of places, usually one or two per state or territory. So they're officially called our DRC thin market trials. And beyond that, my team has our own additional programme of market interventions. Sorry, was there something else about that question?
It's interesting particularly as to how you design the trials or what factors you take into account. And whilst I'm asking the question, did those factors vary in different parts of Australia?
Yeah, it was a very consultative approach with the states and territories. And they brought to us what their particular concerns were. So for example, in ACT, the concern was around behaviour supports because that's a very new support that's available in the market with several barriers to entry and a lot of different regulation. And a lot of people still learning how to use that. So they were really interested in developing that market. But obviously, the ACT context isn't very metropolitan market. So it's got healthy characteristics in many ways. But for that particular support, that's something they wanted to boost. And in other areas, such as the APY Lands, we were dealing with very remote communities which needed market development across all supports.
Is it proposed to conduct those trials in respect to each and every remote or very remote community? Or are you doing a cross-section and then going to draw conclusions from that?
The initial round of projects agreed with states and territories is a distinct group of projects. So we won't be adding anything to that particular list. However, as I said, the ongoing work of my branch is to monitor markets. And then we prioritise internally with feedback that we get from everywhere, from states and territories, from service providers, from our intermediaries, our partners in the community. So using all that information, we have an ongoing programme of prioritising which markets we want to intervene in. There are only a limited set of projects that are actually included in the evaluation. The evaluation doesn't only include those DRC state and territory thin market trials, but it includes some of the other NDIA-initiated projects that we had commenced around a similar timeframe.
From the work you've done to date, is it likely that you'll develop a certain number of models and then apply them to particular communities? Or will you look at each individual community and apply a bespoke model to it? Are you able to indicate what the current thinking is about that?
Yes, certainly. I definitely would say that our approach is to look at each community as a standalone situation. Every community is different, as we've heard this week as well. Um, but um, but it's about understanding um, and taking the time to understand what the particular um, factors are in, in each community. Um, and, but they will, they will usually run along particular themes. So we have a lot of operating guidance as to how we do our work. It's very systematic. We have a list of factors that we look for and identify, and then we, we'll, we'll match the intervention to that. So it's about having as much um, as much clarity of process and options, but with a lot of flexibility as to how to use those appropriately.
What are the primary factors you would look for in any community?
So on the demand side, which is what's happening with the participants themselves and their plans. Um, we have a look at um, the uh, the high-level data. What's the utilisation? What's the activation? So people who might not have used their plans ever. Um, what uh, what types of supports are really low? So if people are not receiving core daily activities, that's um, that's risky and something that um, that we, we would uh, need to address um, more quickly and more urgently. Um, and, and then we get to know the individual plans. So we, we get to understand the participant story through their plans. We meet their support coordinators and we try to understand what their circumstances are. Um, some of the, some of the things that we see a lot are certainly people not understanding the NDIS, people not understanding their plan. Um, we see um, people with very difficult personal situations, which again, we've, we've heard about this week, um, where um, prioritising getting their disability supports, yeah, that might not be a priority for them. So we learn a lot about the participant stories and that, that helps guide us as to um, as to what we might want to do on the provider side for it. So for example, if you've got a lot of participants who are not ready to start receiving support, um, it's no use going into the provider market and trying to attract someone to come in. Um, because they, those participants won't be ready. So we spend a lot more time with our planning teams, our remote community connectors and so on, to build that. Um, while at the same time, starting to build those networks between support coordinators, getting support coordinators to meet providers, starting to share data with providers. And that's the facilitation approach um, uh, generally. Um, but, but then if we find a group of participants who um, really are keen to use support, so Barry Barmera is a great example. It's not a remote or very remote market, but it's an example where we had people not accessing social community civic participation supports. And it was because the market wasn't offering things they were interested in. Um, so we uh, had a couple of expos and um, providers were able to hear from participants. Hey, this is what I'd really like to do. For example, our young people interested in online gaming programmes and things like that. Um, and providers have responded to that really well and are now changing their service offering. So every market is different.
Mr McNorton, is there anything to your knowledge in the overriding legislation governing scheme that would inhibit, inhibit the NDIA from taking a bespoke approach? Which would include a higher than previous level of flexibility and discretion?
No, and in fact, there were some um, council, some changes in the most recent update in the legislation to uh, allow us to do that even um, more easily. Um, so it doesn't limit it. Obviously, there are the overriding principles of participant-centered approach. Um, funding the reasonable necessary supports of participant needs. But there are some other, um, I think they're chapter one or chapter two powers that allows us to commission external um, agencies to help deliver the scheme. Uh, and that was, there were some improvements made to that, I think out of the tune review recommendation uh, in the, in the legislation that just recently passed. So that should give us even more flexibility to help implement what, what Kids is talking about as well.
And so as far as you're aware, it's largely a question of looking at policy and amending it accordingly because you have a sufficient degree of discretion within the legislation to do that?
Yes, yes, that's, and, and that also goes across all of our operational guidelines, not just in relation to, to the, the market intervention that Kids is talking about.
Ms Papadopoulos, with the APY Lands and the um, programme that's been trialled, what is the outcome you'd be looking for? Um, as far as the participants in the APY Lands are concerned, how would this programme, assuming it's implemented more generally, what would it mean? For each indi- pardon me, individual participant in the APY Lands? And for that matter, those First Nations people with disability may be eligible for the plan that the scheme, but are not yet on it. What, what would be the practical outcome?
The practical outcome is uh, people with disabilities being able to uh, spend their days doing things that interest them um, more than what they're able to do now. So the, the reason we targeted this kind of support is because we surveyed participants in the APY Lands and we asked them, what would you, what's your priority? What would you like to do most with your plan? And overwhelmingly, it was around that, that day-to-day, some, give me something to do. Um, and then the provider, part of the terms of their contract is that they spend the first phase working with participants to talk to them and ask them what kinds of activities you would want to do. We've got um, a, a great recent uh, outcome from that process where there's a group of women who have all said that they'd like to learn sewing. So the, the providers now getting some sewing machines and setting, setting up that activity for those women. I also assume there'll be things like hunting, fishing and, and other um, things. But it's also about just take, taking people um, and helping them with whatever tasks they need to do that day. They can drop in and have someone work with them and help them with that.
And what about the uh, health services that are not presently available because there aren't providers, health services in the broader sense and other supports? How does this programme alter facts on the ground as far as the availability of those services? Uh, and uh, affecting in a favourable way the ability of people to access services in their own communities, or at least very close to their own communities?
Okay, I, I would say it's that one more step in the development of a market in the APY Lands and the development of um, more providers um, delivering supports. I can't say that there'll be a direct impact on health services, hopefully health outcomes. If people are healthier, getting out every day and doing what they like to do, hopefully there are health outcome benefits. Um, but in terms of uh, allied health and other services, um, we, we are seeing um, the, the entry of some um, new allied health providers. Yet they're fly in, fly out or drive in, drive out, I, I think. But um, look, anything that um, means there's more presence of NDIS providers in the community um, creates a place perhaps where, where other providers might be able to join in and find participants gathered in a certain place. All of those things are really important to slowly build a um, a more robust service system. So it's step by step.
But do I understand from that answer, and there may be very good reasons for this, but at the moment, the programme really isn't directed towards ensuring more services available within local communities. Un- apart from the ones you're talking about to enable people to uh, do the things on a daily basis that they have expressed a preference for.
The APY Lands uh, project that we've been running for a couple of years actually is not just about direct commissioning. So there are a few other things that we did. Um, initially, it was about managing the transition of the South Australian Government Services out of the APY Lands. Um, so one of the major early wins was um, uh, that we secured uh, a, an external provider to run the Independent Living Centre at Armata, where we had four NDIS participants uh, living there and um, receiving care initially from South Australian Government. There's now a um, a non-government provider running that service. Um, and for all um, the reports are getting back, that those people are receiving better and more services than what they were. That's acknowledged by the South Australian Government. They see it as a success story as well. So that's working really well. We also transitioned uh, over a hundred participants to receiving meals and linen services from a um, a non-government provider. Um, and uh, we've created a network of support coordinators, which is um, being facilitated by Marathon Health. Um, and yeah, the direct commissioning builds on that. We've also got a CFP that NPY Women's Council mentioned um, earlier in, in their evidence this week uh, for ten children to receive uh, functional assessments. Um, and as a result of just the general market facilitation, that, that's why we're seeing the entry of some more allied health providers. But we, we see ourselves staying um, in the APY Lands, you know, for the next few years. And we hope to just keep building what's possible there.
And how uh, would this address the kind of situation we heard about Boise? And the problems he had in getting a, a licence and the neurological assessment in Perth and so on and so forth?
Uh, look, um, can't comment specifically on what kind of assessment he needed and whether it would be possible on country. It sounds like there was some um, machinery or something that he might have needed testing facilities that might only be available in Perth. So um, I'm, I'm not sure.
Hmm. Sorry, Mr Griffin again for my interruption.
If in a case like the NPY Lands, you identified two or three potential providers, who makes the final decision as to which provider is selected?
For coordinated funding proposals, uh, the support coordinators work with participants to make a choice.
And what about, and, and is there any model where the NDIA would decide the provider as opposed to the community?
No. Only in direct commissioning, now that's a panel, panel of assessors.
I want to take you both now to the NUKA report. And the reason I'm doing that is that we don't have sufficient time to go through all the trials being conducted. And to my way of thinking, it appears the NUKA report raises a lot of issues which have been raised this week. But as a plerity to that, can I ask for the top-end map to be brought up? While it's happening, let's see now. Can you see that that's a map of the top end? Um, you see Darwin, Catherine, and then east of Catherine, slightly south is NUKA.
Yes.
Now, NUKA, I understand, was formerly known as the Rope of Lither Mission. And because it's on the rope, which isn't shown on the map. And is about three hundred and thirty kilometres away from Catherine. Has a population in excess of a thousand people, is my understanding. That report appears in hearing bundle C at tab sixty-four. For the record, has the reference CTD dot eight triple zero dot double zero three two dot zero three four eight. And is entitled A Better NDIS at NUKA Report, June two thousand and twenty-one. Have you both had the opportunity to look at that report recently?
I have.
You have?
I've looked at it when it was, when we were working with that team a few months ago.
Okay. That project, if I can call it that, was initiated after NDIA connectors, the connectors' branch manager visited that community in June of two thousand and twenty.
That's correct.
And the NDIA became aware of potential issues with poor performance of the scheme and instructed the branch to investigate and develop better arrangements.
That's correct.
And the idea was, it was hoped to achieve improved outcomes for participants in that community.
Yes, yes.
The NDIA, I understand, had received feedback from the Northern Territory Service Delivery organisations and did an initial desktop analysis.
Yes, we did.
And that desktop analysis indicated that participants were not receiving enough of their reasonable and necessary supports.
That's correct.
That there were insufficient numbers of providers entering the NUKA NDIS market.
Yes.
That the providers in the market were not providing quality supports.
Yes.
And that the longer-term costs to the NDIS may continue and or escalate due to participants not achieving their outcomes.
That's correct.
So, Mr McNorton, effectively, the desktop analysis indicated that it might cost the NDIS more money for a poorer return if it was allowed to continue in its current form.
That's correct. It goes to some of the comments that Kids has mentioned around if people aren't accessing their supports, uh, and they're not connecting in those important um, social community, uh, connection with country, their health outcomes may in fact not improve and go backwards. And then they may need more support in the long term.
And that's quite a sophisticated analysis because it tries to project consequential costs if the situation's improved.
That's correct, yes.
But the bottom line, even for an economic bean counter, is that it might cost you far less dollars by adopting a fresh approach and continuing with the old one.
Yeah, and that's exactly what we're trying to do with the NUKA community.
Hmm. And that report on page seven said in part, the situation is unlikely to improve without the active assistance of NDIA.
That's great.
Papadopoulos, was that because in market terms, there was close to a failure within that community?
Um, the NUKA uh, project was really led by the connectors team and I understand um, they were looking at a range of factors, not just the market itself, but also the community, community development type of thinking, um, that what's happening with plans um, and other things. So that was, that was the conclusion that, that they reached and we, we supported um, with um, uh, offering a CFP um, a little bit uh, later on in the process. But all that analysis was done by that team.
Miss McNorton, my understanding is a team of NDIA representatives from Catherine went to that community to undertake the work which is reflected in the report.
Yes, um, that's correct. Also, um, also the um, remote team out of Darwin uh, and some of our connector, they also had some support from research teams uh, in our national office pulling that report together.
I'm not going to go through the report in detail, but I just want to pick out some highlights and get your comment. You're looking at the impacts on mainstream services as part of that analysis. And I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, that in evidence emerged that mainstream institutions such as the local school, the police and the health clinic were experiencing the impact of the inability of participants to access and utilise what supports may otherwise have been available to them.
Yes, yes, that's correct. I think um, Kids' point was really important. It goes to Commissioner's point yesterday about this was probably one of our first genuine community, a whole of community approach. Not just a market intervention, but what's the entire impacts of the NDIS on the community? And what needs to be done to improve outcomes? And so the mainstream services, the schools, the police, the health centres are all involved in this work. Um, which is probably one of the first of its kind for us.
Because adopting this approach at NUKA enabled you to move outside the confines of a strict economic market analysis.
It did. It focused us much more counsel on the community needs and the community situations.
Was that a challenging exercise for your staff to undertake?
It, it has been. It's been um, quite a long journey. Covid impact as well in the middle of that too, of course, but lots of conversations, building those understandings, community yarning, round tables, they've called them. Uh, and there's still a lot more to go, but it, it, and it, it requires a lot of wrangling of all the mainstream service providers into those conversations too. It's not just the disability mob here again to talk about NDIS. It's about who needs to be around the table to have those conversations. So it took a lot, a lot of effort to get to that point.
And did that involve the liaison with a number of territory agencies?
Yes, absolutely. The Northern Territory Government active, actively involved in that process with us, uh, which was, which was really important.
And you looked at the performance of the Sunrise Health Services within that community. And you looked at the performance of the Sunrise Health Services within that community. And I think it's fair to say that there was sustained criticism of their performance, particularly a lack of professionalism or community focus and various other matters. Has that a a fair overview?
Yeah, well, that that was feedback from other members of the the community. Um, we actually have engaged Sunrise to provide um our remote community connector supports, um and they've been able to increase their start local staffing to help with that. And that's been a really important initiative as part of the whole of community approach. Um, so Sunrise has been doing a lot of good work for us as remote community connectors.
But is it fair to say that the, I'll call it anecdotal evidence from community members was borne out when it was more closely looked at in this study?
Yes, yeah, that's correct.
And because sometimes, Mr. Norton suggested that individuals, when criticizing, don't represent anything other than their own particular circumstance, and this report would suggest that when one looks at it closely, you may well find that those individual complaints are reflective of a much wider issue.
Yes, and and that's that's um counsel of exactly what the team were doing, interviewing local participants, community members about their experience within the NDIS, which then opened up a range of other mainstream issues that came through um in including access to health systems or education. So that's why we we took a much broader lens to the engagement.
And it supports the notion, doesn't it, that face-to-face discussions with people in community can be enormously valuable?
They're priceless, counsel, absolutely.
And when you say priceless, what do you mean by that?
I wish I had more resources to do lots more of them, to be very frank with you. But yeah, absolutely. Everything we get, the feedback from my remote planning team is when we get to go to community, spend time, build trust. In fact, one of my remote planners told me, you've got to visit a community at least eight times to be recognised, fifteen times to be trusted. Um, so even the the ability to continue to go out to be present, to invest in that is so important for us.
And that's also a question of building rapport with people.
Absolutely, yes.
So what you found in that study was that the NDA's support needs were not being met for a variety of different reasons. To what extent did it emerge that people didn't understand their plans or what their entitlements may be?
Yeah, there was certainly an aspect of that too. Um, obviously, our analysis looked at, as Kit's mentioned, when you look at the funding types that aren't being utilised in people's plans. Um, for participants, it's quite often, what what's my connection to country? What's my daily activities I can do? So um, we broke it down into funding types, but actually, community members needed to get their therapy. They needed to have community daily activities. Um, so they were the sorts of themes that emerged. But but very much, um, and that's come through quite strong from this hearing, that we need to do more to make it easy for people to understand their plans.
Can I pick up an issue at this point? And let's deal with requiring assisted technology by way of a wheelchair.
Yes.
You might recall that during my opening, I indicated that a wheelchair suitable for the streets of suburban Melbourne, Sydney or Brisbane doesn't do well on the outback gravel. That's accepted, isn't it?
Absolutely.
The second issue is the time in which it takes on occasions for people to either receive a wheelchair or to receive a replacement wheelchair or to have it repaired. Some of the stories told in the NUKA report suggest, for example, somebody having to wait two years for a wheelchair. And it doesn't appear to have been any dispute that their need and the entitlement was there. What did this study reveal about that issue?
Yeah, it um and there's, we heard some examples earlier in the hearing as well around people waiting far too long to get access to their supports. Especially when those supports are funded. We've we've made a decision that that person needs those supports, so they're in the person's plan, the funding's for them. Um, what we've identified through this work and others is that we need to be able to get the right assessments done much more quickly for people. So the allied health assessments in community. Um, virtual allied health assessments are a good stopgap, but don't work for all complex situations. So the ability to get allied health professionals in or occupational therapists to do those assessments is critical. Then the second part, counsel, is where are the available all-terrain or robust wheelchairs available in the country? And how can we get them there as quick as we can? So they're the two bits of the puzzle that we've been doing a lot of work on to try and condense that time because it was taking far too long.
Let's assume that there's no dispute that the person is entitled to a wheelchair.
Yes.
From a logistical point of view, it's difficult for us who aren't involved in the work you do to understand how that isn't a simple logistical exercise. Source the product, deliver the product. Amazon does it does it hundreds of thousands of times every day. The army does it, albeit in different circumstance. Why can it happen that somebody would wait two years for something that was indisputably required?
Yeah, I mean, those wait times are simply not good enough, and there's been a lot of work. So there's two two things we've done to try and really break the back of this situation because it's just not good enough that it's taking so long. First thing was in March this year, we changed our policy settings to remove the need for quotes for wheelchairs or assisted technology up to fifteen thousand dollars. And what this happened, it was quotes were going back and forth and back and forth. Um, and that was just adding time, and then a quote would expire after sixty days and you had to get another quote. So it was really inappropriate um in some of those delays. So we've removed the need for that altogether. So that now allows um any of the sort of trading specialists of the person, uh disability uh technology advisors to say, this person definitely needs a wheelchair. It's in the plan. We don't need any more quotes. So that's taken out a huge amount of the steps and timing in the process. The second bit is, as you said, is the supply chain, for want of better, the term of how you can then find that piece of equipment. Some pieces of equipment are available in providers in Darwin. Others are quite bespoke and need to be manufactured to suit the height and growth. And a lot of those manufacturers in the big cities um on the eastern seaboard, and then we need to get the trucking company to take take it up there. Um, we've we've just released earlier this year a uh new national database. It's called Ask Ned, the National Equipment Database. And we've got every single assisted technology provider we can who can do robust all-terrain to put what's available on the shelf and what they can build, as well as the delivery times. Uh, and every support coordinator knows they can tap into that. If you can't get the right assessment, there's a, there is an online allied health assessment national network now for this product, for products as well. Um, and again, we've been able to try and get that into place um to try and, as you said, we need to, we need to really close the time it's taking for those things. And I think those those two things are starting to make a difference now.
What happens when the support coordinator fails to do their job properly? And that contributes to delay. Is there any way you can intervene in those circumstances?
Um, we do a lot a lot of work engaging with participants because one of the things we can obviously see with utilization, if we're seeing high levels of utilization of support coordination, but not much utilization of other parts of the plan, there's often a conversation with the support coordinators, so what's going on here? Because you can see you're you're drawing down the plan, but we're not seeing many other supports being drawn down. So our teams and Kit's teams will have conversations with support coordinators about what do we need to do here to help um what's happening? What else? What else is happening in this this participant's life or this community that needs to be done? So we do a bit of intervention there, but Kit might want to add to that. She she looks after the uh support coordinators nationally, but.
Before you do, Ms. Papadopoulos, what's your current expectation on that simple example? I'm in NUKA. Everyone agrees I need a wheelchair. In July of two thousand twenty-two, what would be your expectation of delivery?
Uh, we have some um ser- service guarantees and internal ke- key performance indicators now. We'd like those in sixty or ninety days from them being identified in someone's plan to be delivered.
Although better than the example, it still seems a long time. Um, let's say if you say ninety days was in accord with your expectation, upper end.
Yeah.
Think of the situation where I'm in this remote community. My whole lifestyle and enjoyment of life is suddenly changed because I have no mobility. That's a very long time for someone in that situation.
Yeah, I guess it it depends, counsel, if it is, um, as I said, if it's a real if there's been a catastrophic spinal injury, the person would be in hospital in Darwin, we'd be working on the exit from hospital, have that equipment for them. Okay, so that's it. Um, if someone's mobility is decreasing over time, they have a wheelchair and that wheelchair needs to be replaced, we'd be working on the replacement of that wheelchair through their plan. Um, if it's a um a more of a standard uh wheelchair that doesn't need any sort of customisation, those things are quite readily available and we'd expect them to be there much quicker than those timeframes. If it is a very bespoke build of a wheelchair, just the a time to to actually construct, to get it, the the fittings done, uh and then to get it delivered there, um can can take that period of time. Even, but but that's kind of the most extreme, I would think, example.
So I want to.
You heard that evidence this week about the failure of the hoist, um external and internal. Uh, the wheelchair and the command. Um, just listening to the evidence this way and the impact that it had on that family. Uh, what needs to change uh with health allied health um providers in the way that they are selecting equipment because the external or the outdoor um hoist failed at the first go.
Um, Commissioner, it was a really harrowing story, wasn't it, that, you know, we've got an allied health professional prescribing this sort of equipment and getting it delivered, and it was the wrong sort of equipment. Um, you know, they've all got their own professional standards and others that they should be working to, but you you do um start, your mind goes to, do we have to have some more bespoke providers of remote robust all-terrain type of allied allied health and specialist equipment, I mean, assisted technology equipment?
Um, I'm aware of minimum standards of um housing design um on the APY lands for remote housing. Seems practical and sensible to have a minimum standard for equipment in re- remote and very remote areas um as a minimum standard, rather than um off the shelf, that seems suitable for anywhere in Australia because the impact is incredible.
Yeah, I I agree, Commissioner. And I'm not, I'm not actually right across all the standards of the allied health professional industries, but um having providers who understand what is all-terrain or robust is really important. And service providers to be able to go to those specialists so that when it gets there, it's durable for unsealed roads or unpaved roads and those sorts of conditions are really important.
I I was surprised that even the hoist that was used internally in the house actually was too big.
Yeah.
It felt it felt like there was no effort to even look at the the house.
Well, if I I agree, I I I don't understand how an an occupational therapist could not have measured the width of the house for the type of voice that was being built down the house. So, you know, that's something we have to look into um around that.
Thank you.
Mr. Griffin, I'm not sure whether you propose to draw out some of the points that are made in this report. Um, you do, do you intend to do that? I I mean, specific matters such as only three of the twenty-four participants interviewed knew something about the NDIS.
I do intend to get to those matters. But before I do, if I can adopt the language of former Prime Minister Keating, that in a two-horse race backs self-interest every time. Have you ever considered building in an incentive to the providers of the wheelchair to get it there more quickly? Give them some incentive to make it happen. Given the fact that you're comparing the cost to you on the one hand and the wellbeing and lifestyle of the participant on the other.
I'm not aware that we've considered that, but I think it's it's not an unreasonable consideration, actually, counsel. So that might be something we can take away and give some thought to.
Or a penalty if they don't deliver.
Yeah, that's true.
The research at NUKA also revealed that all six of the support coordinators lived in either Catherine, three hundred and twenty-one kilometres away, or Darwin, six hundred and thirty-five kilometres away. And it concluded, which makes delivery of the above services very difficult, if not impossible. Does that accept by the NDA?
Yes, I think we've heard a lot, um even from the the um witnesses from the Fitzroy saying that the ability to have a local support coordinator is really, really important.
I won't go through all of the matters revealed, but it indicated that eighty-three percent of the participants did not know who their support coordinator was. Rhetorically, I asked, how can that happen?
Yeah, well, again, that's it's concerning, isn't it? That's why we need to do some more. I think one of the interventions was to look at the support coordination model.
Either you or Ms. Papadopoulos able to take that answer further by saying, yes, it's concerning, but it happened for the following reason, and what we're going to do to make sure it doesn't happen in the future.
I I can start with the what we're doing with the the trial in NUKA around support coordination. Um, I think as the report goes to, there was, um, if my memory serves me correct, it's around three hundred and fifty or four hundred thousand dollars a year of support coordination going to that community, but I might be misquoted there, but it was a reasonable sum of money. There were multiple support coordinators um supporting participants in that community. And as the report found, not everyone had a strong connection with their support coordinator. Um, so what's the better way of um looking at intervening in a market like that where we can have a support coordinator who is trusted, understood and accessible uh for the local community members? Um, and um, you know, that's the work we're continuing to do. We've seen some good examples of that outside of NUKA, where where we've been able to build local support coordinators through the ACHO sector for argument's sake, uh which has made a significant difference in some of those communities.
Of the twenty people spoken to in this study, only five, when prompted with the actual name of the support coordinator, were able to recognise who you're talking about.
Hmm, yeah, that's correct.
Is it always under consideration to wherever possible, have the support coordinator in the same geographical location as the community?
Uh, that would, that would be the ideal. Um, absolutely, obviously, um that that doesn't cover every single community of the entire country. Um, but there is a lot of merit in having access to your support coordinator. And we heard some evidence of that earlier this week, right? Support coordinators in Perth and I like speak to them on the phone every now and then. So the ability to have the local organisations providing support coordination um obviously has a lot more benefit to participants.
The report then deals with lack of knowledge and effectiveness of the NDIS in that community. It indicates, amongst other things, that only three of the twenty-four participants interviewed knew something about the NDIS. The remaining twenty-one had little to no knowledge of what the scheme did.
And and that's, that's partly, obviously, why we needed to do more in NUKA. Um, and we didn't have a presence there at all through remote community connectors um before the uh um our work with the NUKA community started. And I think that's probably a testament to that too, where people had obviously met with our planners, they'd done their plans, hadn't had much connection through their support coordinators, and we had no local remote community connector who was the navigator on the ground.
So what precisely does the NDA propose to do to deal with that issue of such an extraordinary lack of knowledge about the scheme?
In NUKA specifically, in NUKA, yeah. So there's um obviously, the whole of whole of community approach is still underway, counsel, but there's been a couple of um initiatives already that have been done. Um, we, the the NDA team, uh supported with Kit's team, continue to have community yarning and round tables. We now have Sunrise Health providing on-the-ground remote community connective presence there uh in a full-time capacity, which is really important for us. Um, we have been working on a coordinated funding model, you know, for proposal for NUKA as well. Um, and we continue to support the NUKA community. We have the eldest groups, we have Sunrise, we have the Northern Territory Government, the other mainstream providers are all at the all at the table now. Um, looking at some of those local solutions and Kit's can talk about the work that they're doing around the coordinator funding proposal, if you'd like, counsel.
Before we do that, a PowerPoint presentation entitled Draft NUKA Community Analysis, which appears in hearing bundle C at tab sixty-nine, identified identified three particular issues. Just raise those three. Firstly, an absence of a culturally appropriate engagement and communication strategy when consulting with the community. Secondly, the language used to communicate agency information is not culturally appropriate, which leads to misinformation, confusion and potentially mistrust. And thirdly, consultation with the community is not taking into account the cultural appropriateness of the engagement with Aboriginal and Torres Strait Arminist people. That was conclusions reached by the work done by your organisation. How does the organisation intend to tackle those issues? With reference to NUKA to give us some concrete examples.
Yeah, thank you. And we have those emerging themes have been consistent throughout the course of this hearing too. And the need for us to do more culturally appropriate information about the NDIS in community, in language. So people can, from First Nations people in remote, can understand what the scheme is and how they can use their plans more flexibly. I think that's come through really strongly. There is a whole range of work underway in terms of supporting remote community connectors to build out better, more appropriate language products around the, around the NDIS. So that's one of the first things we're doing. We are reviewing our remote, very remote strategy at the moment. The review found very similar themes across areas of focus. And one of those is that we need to do more around our communications to tailor communications much more appropriately for First Nations people in remote communities. So there's another piece of work, the agency's progressing around that.
Will that involve engaging First Nations people with expertise in this area?
Most definitely.
And to what extent in that work? Let's take NUKA. What's your timeframe in terms of addressing the issues raised in the report? Do you have milestones in mind that you want to achieve?
So there are various milestones around things like implementing the coordinated funding proposal, which is around the access to supports that is currently underway. We had a target around getting the remote community connector in situ in place, which we've been able to do now. And then it's the ongoing, I think there's another community yarning round table booked in for the next few weeks, where the teams and the Northern Territory Government and other entities will be there for the next of those community gatherings to continue the dialogue.
One of the final conclusions on page 16 of the report is the traditional mainstream model is not and will not work at NUKA or in other remote areas. Does the NDA accept that proposition?
Yes, our own findings from our first iteration of the remote, very remote strategy review was that we need to do more to design some of our policies and practice that are more tailored and fit for purpose for remote communities.
What will your new approach look like as contrasted to your previous approach? What are the main characteristics of the change in approach?
Well, without preempting that, because it's this work in progress and we're just assembling the external stakeholder references groups. As June mentioned yesterday, there's some preliminary meetings around that. But clearly, the themes of flexibility, more tailored approaches for remote communities and it making the scheme easier to access and understand would be some overriding principles. And then the work that, the great work Kit's team are doing around improving the supply of services so people can access the funding in their plan will be a really important component of that too.
Mr. McNorton, I'm not quite sure that you answered directly the first of the series of questions that Mr. Griffin asked, namely, does the NDA accept the proposition stated at page 16 of the report that the traditional mainstream NDIS model is not and will not work at NUKA and/or in other remote areas?
With respect, Chair, he did answer the question in the affirmative.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Yes, which is why I didn't proceed any further with that issue.
I see the word yes was responsive to that. You accepted that proposition?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I missed that. Thank you.
It seems to flow from what we've been discussing that there needs to be a whole of government approach involving both the NDA, any Commonwealth agencies and any state or territory agency.
Yes, I'd agree with that, counsel. I think a lot of the evidence throughout the course of the week were around other elements that impact communities of which access to the NDIS is one. So some of these issues are really, I mean, one of the things that even that I struggle with or my team struggle with is finding housing for my staff into these remote communities. We've been trying to recruit staff into Fitzroy for two years and we can't get them there because there's no housing. So these things are quite deep issues we need a whole of government response to. So, yes, I agree.
Another conclusion appears to be that the key to achieving sustainable improvements is to enable First Nations communities to develop solutions for themselves.
Yes.
Does your organisation accept that proposition in this context?
They have to be community-led solutions. And I think that's the, you know, some of Kit's examples about working with the community in the APY and other places like Palm Island have really demonstrated that.
And do you accept?
So I'm sorry to interrupt again, but the observation at page 16 of the report seems to place in focus an issue that has arisen over the last few days. And that is whether the response or responses to the difficulties that we have heard about and that are reflected in this report. This report, based on consultations and discussions in about April 2021, reveals what could only be described, I think, as a disastrous situation in this community. What you're engaged in, and let me accept it's a good faith attempt, even if a bit belated, to try and address all these problems. What you're trying to do is to address these problems by a communal approach of the kind that Commissioner Mason spoke, has spoken about on a number of occasions, within a framework of an individual approach. And I'm just wondering whether this is trying to adapt a programme, a structure, a scheme, that really isn't capable of being reformed in the way that is required to address the needs of First Nations people with disability in remote areas with the best will in the world. Do we not need to contemplate a different model altogether for those communities which are unique in a range of respects? In other words, can this be done within the framework of the NDIS?
Well, Chair, we think it can with the flexibility the new legislation has provided around commissioning. But I do think it is a good and timely opportunity to raise that issue as part of Minister Shorten, our new minister, has announced to bring forward a review into the NDIS. He's also announced a focus on improving, as part of the review, improving service delivery into remote. And I think those very macro issues you're suggesting need to be on the table for that review and that consideration. In the meantime, we need to continue to doing all we can to improve outcomes for First Nations people in remote. And we will continue to do that within the current legislation.
Bearing our terms of reference, we might need to do it as well. Yes, Mr. Griffin.
The analysis document at tab 69 sums up by saying, this will mean a change to the overall policy and service delivery architecture through structural reform to transfer accountability and decision-making to communities. Stripped from the bureaucratic jargon, how does that look in NUKA in the next 12 months?
It's the ongoing approach through the community-led, the community roundtable conversations where the community are much more empowered to look at solutions around the NDIS and those other mainstream services systems that we have at the table as well. So I think that's the principle of empowerment at the community level, counsel, and our role in trying to facilitate that.
And that's referred to, I think, in part in paragraph 143 of your statement.
Yes.
The work you've been doing in NUKA commenced in around 2020. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
We're now in the middle of 2022. How do you assess the progress over that period of time?
As I mentioned, we do need to, there were quite significant COVID restrictions accessing communities, remote communities, quite rightly for a significant period of time, councils. That meant we weren't able to physically visit there for some period, which put things on hold. We've since been able to visit and reconnect more regularly, which has been good. We're close to the, you know, and Kit's can talk through the coordinator funding proposal. So you need that too, counsel. And those key things in place around, so we've been really pleased to be able to get the remote community is up and running and having that presence on the ground. We've been really pleased to be able to have the round tables and getting the other mainstream service systems at the table. But it is a journey, these things take time to build rapport, as you said, and build trust. They don't happen quickly and they do take time.
In the draft report at tab 64, it purports to define the success of the project. And what I'm going to ask you is whether these factors are the factors that the NDA is going to measure its performance against. All participants have tailored and accurate plans. Secondly, the service model and supports for all of the funded supports are attractive, accessible, culturally appropriate and effective. Thirdly, the participants and their families or carers understand their own plans. And fourthly, the arrangements are socially, culturally and financially sustainable. Are those aspirational targets? Or are they targets based on your experience of doing this project achievable?
In a way, they're both. They're also targets that we've spoken to the community about in different terminology. But, you know, these are things that are important for the community. They're important for the agency and we're going to do all we can to progress those. So they might sound aspirational, but actually we think they're really important targets to aim for.
My hope is they're not merely aspirational, which is why I asked the question. The gist of my question is, based on your experience to date in this project, is really, are they achievable in the circumstances of NUKA?
I think they are, I think they are. And we're always seeing that if we can start to get the better coordinator of funding for those supports, the therapy supports, the support coordination, the social and community participation, all of a sudden, we start to go from a community that had very, very low utilization and access to services to start to getting those therapy supports, to start getting social community participation activities in community, to have a local community connector who can help with the activities on the ground. Those things are really powerful outcomes for those participants and those communities.
That's a question about the NUKA work. We heard this week about the importance of family and informal supports that family provide to their family members with disability in the NUKA experience. Are family members now participating in the service system, so to speak? Or are they still seen as, are they still participating as informal supports?
Commissioner, do you mean are we having, have we got paid family members or are you talking about?
Yes.
I'm not aware of any paid family members as part of a person's plan. I'm not sure if any family members are working now in the broader service system. I don't know that, sorry.
That seemed to be a fundamental building block raised by peak organisations this week and also family members have given evidence. And I think if that question is not given attention to, then we'll continue to have that as a solution raised. But it seems like it's not a priority in activating workforces in these remote areas. So I'm keen to know if the NDA is interested in that question. Because, yes, there are complexities about it. But managing those complexities, I think, is critical if we want to activate local workforces.
No, thanks, Commissioner. There's two bits, we're supporting some work that department is leading around building local workforces, where we are trying to get, working with the ATO sector and others around having more community members trained up and engaged to be part of the NDIS service system. The other broader policy issue that's come up a few times this week, as you mentioned, is around the scheme's ability to pay family members, which obviously needs a lot more policy attention based on the outcomes of this week. There is policy now around that in the agency where we do it in exceptional circumstances and mainly where there are no other viable options available. I think, Chair, you raised a couple of times this week around the risk overlay and what are the policy parameters we need to think that through? That we'd need to talk through that with key stakeholders, I think, to make sure that we're getting those policy settings right. It's not a quick thing, we just need to engage with the right people, I think, Commissioner.
And just in the last comment I'll make is, and Pat Turner in her evidence, or in that panel that we had yesterday, talked about the Aboriginal health worker. Critical is the frontline work in connecting the services offered by Aboriginal Health Service and working with individual members who come in for services and also they work with families. There you have the model.
Yes.
Here in Alice Springs, that's the model, Aboriginal people from this community, working in Aboriginal controlled community. Organisations working with their family members. So, and that's the model in remote communities. So it's the economic, the social, the cultural benefit is there. And it would be, it would be transformative if this issue could be resolved.
Yeah.
Because it seems to me from the NUKA experience that even at the family level, the the value proposition of the NDA as an insurance scheme is not understood by Aboriginal people in remote communities. It feels like the section of the scheme that is the direct benefit is talked about with clients and families. But actually, the value proposition of it in terms of the Australian Government and the Australian community is not understood. So what that means is we need more local people working in the system and being part of the governance and service delivery model to have more of an understanding.
Yes.
And I'm sure you understand this, but there needs to be more of a critical mass of workers.
Yeah.
So in those local communities.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
That just leads me to ask this very specific question. The Sunrise Health Service that is referred to in the report, is that an Aboriginal-controlled organisation?
Yes, yes.
And yet its performance was said to be not terribly good. Does anybody know or analyse why that was the case?
I'm not sure of the actual issues I understood. They were from some interviews with other community members around their access to the service. And it wasn't open every day of the week.
I don't want to engage in speculation about it. Yes, thank you, Mr. Griffin.
As Commissioner Mason raised the issue, can I come to the question of funding of family members? Mr. McNorton, in paragraph 115 of your statement, you state that the NDA does not have specific guidance on how the, quote, "exceptional circumstances", unquote, threshold applies to funding First Nations families in remote and very remote areas to provide services. Can I assume from that that there is no prohibition on funding family members under the current scheme?
That's correct. Yeah.
But can I take it that there would be legitimate concerns when considering whether to fund family members? Based on your experience, what would be the types of concerns you would have when faced with a proposal to fund a family member?
Um. It, it's a, it's a bit of a, a challenging policy space because um of the issues um around participant safety and risk. We have seen some horrific situations where a person had one carer in their life and um, there were some pretty tragic outcomes. So we, we're conscious of, of participant uh safety and risk as part of that model. Um, also the ability for participants to exercise choice and control of who provides that personal care. Um, and sometimes people may not want it to be a close family member. So that, that's really important. Having, having said that, in COVID, we did relax the exceptional circumstances a little bit because there was the work, workforce mobility and people that were severely immunocompromised, but they weren't able to have other workers come into the house. And so we relaxed it a little bit in COVID.
Can I ask you at that point? Did COVID give your organisation any insights in relation to this issue?
It did, because we did, we did specifically update the policy and, and slightly relaxed the, the exceptional circumstances to respond to the pandemic. Interestingly, council, there was less than ten requests that certainly come across my desk for it. Um, because people still wanted to have an appropriately trained support worker come into the house. And that's the other thing, the level of training and regulation. Um, that, and oversight that, that is in place. Having said that, we have heard very strongly, as Commissioner said this week, that is an area that um needs some more attention from policy. We, we just want to make sure we're doing it the right cultural but risk overlay as well.
Without any in-depth analysis, it would appear from the evidence of Maman G and Jeff, that on the face, they would seem to be the sort of people that could provide an exceptional level of service without any apparent concerns for risk. Was that your, your impression from their evidence that, that they gave it?
Yes, I, I thought they, um, they were very good witnesses and, and it was, it was a really um powerful, insightful account of the supports they provide. Um, the, the other, um, the other consideration we have to make in a, in accordance with decisions like this, council. Um, and without sounding too bureaucratic, um, but under the Act, section thirty four, I think it is, E, talks about when we provide funding in someone's plan, we need to take into consideration what is reasonable for the family, parents or community to provide. Um, so there is that element we have to take into consideration as well as there are other um payments such as carer pensions and things like that, uh, that also come into play. So um, that is a factor we need to, given it's in the act, we need to um be very mindful of.
Are there any other specific risk factors that the N D I A considers when deciding whether or not to fund a family member?
Um, the exceptional circumstances are, I, I mean, they're quite limited in terms of um cultural and also have we, have we explored the possibility that other, there is available support workers um for the participant? Um, support workers who are trained, who are registered, um, who have the appropriate safeguards in place. Um, if all of those things don't exist and there's a risk to the participant of not getting any support, then that, that could be a factor for us to consider that.
I think you indicated that the level of application from family members is quite low.
It is quite low, yes.
Have you explored why that is?
Not, not to my knowledge, sorry, Councilor.
There seemed to be from some witnesses a belief that they wouldn't be eligible. And certainly Jeff gave evidence to the effect that he wished it were otherwise, but he didn't regard him managing as being eligible. Is that simply a case of them being mistaken as to how the scheme currently operates in terms of eligibility to make an application?
Um, it, it could be. I, I'm not part of, obviously detailed into their planning meetings or what's been discussed, but that, that could, could be part of that.
Does it flow from what you've said that in an analysis of an application by a family for support, that the family are seen as the last resort? If they're seen as the last resort, they're more likely to be treated as an exceptional circumstance?
We probably, council, plan the other way around. So we, we, when we're planning for the participant, but we're building their reasonable and necessary supports, taking into consideration what's already provided uh as informal supports, as I, as I mentioned previously. And then if there are no available, so who are then the available support workers to support that participant? Who is available to provide personal care or therapy or any of the other supports that person requires? Um. If in the, in the conversation comes up that there is no supports available at all for the person and there's a risk, then that's when we can, could consider it if there, if that was a, uh, if that related to that participant-specific situation.
And is that the point where you could characterise that as building capacity within the family and hence the community?
Yes, and, and almost goes, um, part, part of Commissioner Mason's, um, really important point was where we can, we can build family members to then even become trained support workers and register with an art show. All of a sudden, they get the sort of support of an organisation as well. So that, that type of building a local workforce uh is, is a really important aspect of that too, where we can.
And Mr. Griffin, I was gonna ask, ask that question is um because if we're talking about a family member or, or families becoming part of the workforce, there's, there's a, a really important understanding of responsibilities. And the opportunity to even be auspiced by an Aboriginal community-controlled organisation or to be registered, as you said. Um, my thinking was not that they would be uh working in isolation to accountability or transparency or monitoring, supervision, case management.
Yeah.
Because there's also um this necessity of what does it mean to be in the workforce? And we heard that evidence from N P Y Women's Council. They started services in the nineteen nineties and is still saying that level of supervision and support and case management of workers is still critical. Um, in fact, their model is um the Mel Perara way of working, which is a non-Indigenous and, and an honourable worker working together using their expertise because of that low educational attainment, but high level of cultural and family expertise. So yeah, I think I also wanted to make that point as well.
Yeah, I, I think it's a, it's a incredibly important point too. And um it also, having the, having the support of an organisation for your own sort of development and peer learning and all of those aspects are really important. But the other thing too is if the family member was sick for a week or so, the organisation might be able to have someone else to come in and support the participant with their needs as well. So that, those sorts of things are really important, Commissioner, I agree.
Before I proceed any further, can I indicate in response to Chair your question about Sunrise?
Yeah.
On page nine of the report at tab sixty four, which is the better N D I S at NUKA report. I won't go into detail, but it says performance of Sunrise Health Service and in, as N D I S and primary healthcare provider. And it outlines in page nine, going over to page ten, the sources of information which indicated that their performance was not up to standard.
Yes, I, I was aware of that. I was just wondering whether it was an Aboriginal controlled organisation or external.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And finally, Mr. McNorton, on this topic, you heard evidence from Jeff talking about how he gave up his job to take care of Tristan, helping develop the business. Created the men's shed equipment and thought that the idea of a mentor program might be enormously valuable. Without me going through his evidence, did you see merit in the suggestions he was making in looking at a mentor model in some communities?
Yes, I, I mean, I thought his, his evidence was fantastic. What they're obviously doing, the local football and men's shed and peer, peer, um, peer mentoring and the employment programme they've got with the landscaping business. I think all of those things are very, very good. We, we have some funding opportunities um, um, within the scheme around peer learning and mentoring and, and coaches actually for um people who have psycho-social visibility and, and other mental health type conditions. So we have um coaching type roles, uh, peer coaches for, for, um, for um, um, participants. It's a, it's a funded support type that can be put in place. So there are some options there. I, I'm not sure about what other funding streams there may be for that type of peer learning and, and men's shed things. I'm sure there are other sorts of funding sources of great initiatives like that.
And in particular, he said, based on what he'd learnt in assisting Tristan, that he thought within their community a well-trained person in mentoring could perhaps then mentor up to five other young people. And hence you suddenly have the potential with twenty mentors to be providing support to a hundred young people in those communities. Did you see merit in what he was suggesting?
Oh, I certainly did. I think, I think there's a lot of value and evidence that mentoring is a fantastic um type of support model. Whether that's within the construct, I'm not sure if all those people are N D I S participants or, or others. Um, so whether it's an N D S funded programme or otherwise, I'm not sure, but definitely merit in the programme, council for sure.
I don't expect you to commit yourself publicly to this, but would be that to be the sort of proposal which would be considered if put before the N D I A?
Um, I think it's things we'd have to look at again, are, are the participants the ones being mentored, all those sorts of things, council, but yes.
But you'd be open to considering.
Yes, yeah, there's sorts of community-led initiatives. I think that should come through.
Mr. Griffin, we've been going, I think, for now to record.
We're right on the break. I was going to suggest eleven fifteen.
So should we have a break now?
Yes.
For ten minutes, quarter of an hour?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes, yes, I think that the appropriate, it's now eleven fifteen, we'll resume at eleven twenty-five central time. Thank you very much.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Chair. What I propose to do now is to deal with some discrete issues. Can I start with the question of support coordination and particularly plan utilisation? If a participant has a plan which contains one hundred thousand dollars and only ten thousand dollars is used in the relevant time, does that create a flag within the N D I A?
It creates a flag for my team through our market monitoring work. Um, not so much with regard to one individual, but with regard to patterns um in places of um numbers of participants not using their plans.
So your unit takes a macro approach, but you can divide it by geographical location when you look at utilisation rates?
Yes.
Let's assume in location X, ten participants, each had a plan for one hundred thousand dollars and on average they only use ten thousand. What would that cause you to do in your part of the N D A?
Uh, if that market um was identified as a high-risk market through our monitoring, um, we'd take a deeper look into that market. So we'd consider things like how long has that place been in the scheme? So um, for example, Western Australia has transitioned to the N D I S more recently than other states and territories. So um, so there might be um an, an explanation why that's still taking time to get going. But for markets that have been in the N D I S for many years, um, we'd certainly be very concerned about that. Um, we'd talk to uh the relevant um state manager, so the planning teams in that place. Um, do you, and ask them, do you know what's happening in this area? What's, what, what's your, what are your reflections on what's happening in that place? And we'd have a look at the plans themselves as to what, what's in that ten percent that they're drawing down. Um, and uh, we'd go from there as to whether to prioritise it as a market to working further.
Would you expect feedback from the state manager along the lines of that person having discussed the issue with uh support coordinators?
Uh, we, when we talk to the planning team, um, we, we talk to them about what we're seeing being used. So if that ten percent, for example, is support coordination but nothing else or low levels of other supports, um, we, we would certainly um be looking to the support coordinator as a key person that's accountable for what is happening in that plan. Um, and we'd, we would go to support coordinators directly. Um, if we're seeing people on the other hand who have support coordination in their plan, but they haven't been connected to a support coordinator, then we would go back to the planning team and ask for that connection to be made.
Is any person or unit within the, in the I A responsible for assessing the performance of support coordinators?
My team leads market stewardship of the support coordination market. The support coordination market um is, is regulated by the national, the N D I S Quality and Safeguards Commission um with regard to uh practice standards, registration uh requirements and so on. Um, so a, a lot of the issues around quality and capability fall within the responsibility of the uh Quality and Safeguards Commission. However, um, we, we share um that, that market stewardship role with them and there are other things that we can do on our side as well.
Based on your experience, is it fair to describe the Quality and Safeguards Commission approach as to being primarily complaint-led?
Uh, no, there's some, there's a, a, a large element which is around um the, the regulation. So the registration requirements are really important, but also the code of practice that applies to any provider operating within the N D I S, registered or unregistered. So that creates um expectations around um quality of services, um, which then the complaints system complements by giving people a way to follow up.
National Support Coordinator X has been in that role for two or three years. How does the organisation or the Quality and Safeguards Commission form a view as to whether they're discharging their obligations to the standard you expect? What do you take into account?
If the support coordination organisation is registered, they will do audits on a regular basis and that is how the N D I S Quality and Safeguards Commission will satisfy themselves around that.
When they, when you say they will do audits, who's they?
The um provider pays for their own independent audit and the documentation of that is provided into the commission.
Is one of the factors taken into account with support coordination with First Nations people? Whether or not the coordinator is culturally competent?
That's a really important um quality that a participant should be looking for. Um, and uh in the, in the system that we have, um, it's about the participant being connected to the right kind of support coordinator that meets their needs. Um, that might be, then their needs might be specifically around um cultural competence. But for others, there are other kinds of support coordinators who, who specialise. For others, there are other kinds of support coordinators who who specialize in certain kinds of disability or other things, for example, that might suit them.
Who ultimately decides whether the coordinator is up to the task?
Uh, the, the, the regulatory regime um that's administered by the um N D I S Quality and Safeguards Commission. Uh, can ultimately um investigate complaints or investigate um the results of audits, for example, and it and it has mechanisms. Mechanisms where it can deregister certain providers or or ban them from operating under the N D I S.
From some previous public hearings of this commission, there's been a strong suggestion. That the Q S C is very much complaints-driven rather than what I would describe as proactive. Do you have any experience in relation to that issue?
Um, I don't have a view of what, whether they've got the balance right. I understand that they have. A number of functions and they have teams responsible for each of those functions. Uh, and I, and I know that they have recently funded some proactive work. Uh, specifically around support coordination. So I have seen them with some recent relevant initiatives that have been proactive.
And this is addressed to both of you, based on your experience. If one judged the performance of a support coordinator on the basis of their complaint history. That would be a very crude measure, wouldn't it?
I think it would be an important um piece of information for a consumer to understand.
Except that, but it would ultimately be a crude measure if that was the factor you looked at.
But perhaps it um the the providers would feel it gave a skewed uh perception of their overall performance. Yes.
Let me go back in a step. Sorry, Miss McNorton, did you want to add anything?
No, no.
Okay, let me go back a step. The provider has to be audited, correct?
If they're registered.
If they're registered. Who selects the auditor?
I think the uh provider themselves selects the auditor.
Is there an inherent weakness in that approach?
Uh, first of all, I can't confirm that that that's accurate. It's just my understanding of generally how regulatory regimes. Work where self-auditing um is really common in in regulation across Australia. Um, there are, um, as I understand it, then a number of safeguards. Around the appropriateness of the auditors that can be chosen. So I assume there's some level of regulation of who the auditors are in the first place. Um, and then some um examination of the quality of the reports that are coming through uh into the regulatory authority as well.
Miss McNorton, do you have any further knowledge on that subject?
No.
Um, can I ask you to take on notice the question of whether or not. The auditors are selected by the provider? And could you, via your legal representatives, provide to the commission subsequent to this hearing? Uh, details of any safeguards that surround that process?
Yes, sure. We'll work with the uh Quality and Safeguards Commission to prepare that.
Thank you. Can I move to the topic of that arose in relation to Emily Carter and Lauren Rice from the M W R C? At hearing bundle A, tab sixty-three, they say at paragraph seventy-nine that following the Lil One project. None of the twenty-one children who were diagnosed with F A S D. Have received any formal disability support, including N D I S supports. Firstly, were you, Mr. McNorton, present when that evidence was given?
Yes, I was.
Do you have any knowledge in relation to that topic?
Of those individual twenty-one cases or F A S D generally?
Let's deal with uh those twenty-one initially.
Not personally in the twenty-one, no, sorry.
So can I ask um on notice whether the N D I A has taken any steps to ensure that the children diagnosed with F A S T. As a part of that particular little one study, who may be eligible for N D I S, have N D I S plans? And likewise, ask your legal representatives to collate any information with respect to that. On a more general issue, Miss McNorton, does the N D I S recognize fetal alcohol syndrome? As a condition relevant to disability?
Yes, we do. Um, uh fetal alcohol spectrum disorder is on our one of.
Just just let me pause because I want to draw a distinction between fetal alcohol syndrome, F A S. And fetal alcohol spectrum disorder, F A S D. Do I take it, make answer your convincing that if A S D is now recognized as well?
Yes.
When did that occur, do you know?
Um, my understanding is there was a, there was a joint parliamentary committee into fetal alcohol spectrum disorder. In twenty nineteen twenty, there was a series of recommendations out of that, one of which was for us at the agency to um. Look at how we recognize fetal alcohol spectrum disorder in the scheme. It has subsequently been added to our list of this different disability types. It's in our list B. Which means we identify it as a permanent condition. And um so it meets the permanency test of the N D I S Act. And then what we need to do is get the information around the level of functional impact the disability has, given it's a spectrum disorder that can vary per person.
And do you know whether the other condition, fetal alcohol syndrome, had previously been recognized?
I'm not sure of that, counsel. Um, I know that part of our approaches recently is to use. Um, what we've been advised from the sector is the more contemporary language is to use fetal alcohol spectrum disorder as part of eligibility.
So is it your understanding that the original descriptive fetal alcohol syndrome has been replaced by F A S D? This is the N D I A concern.
That's my personal understanding, yes.
And once again, if that understanding is not correct, can you let us know?
I will come back to you on that.
Okay, thank you for those answers. Can I move to the issue of return to country? You would have heard quite a lot of evidence during the course of the week about that issue. Under the current scheme, a First Nations person who leaves the community for whatever reason. To be in another location and wants to return to country. Do they have any entitlement to support him doing that?
Um, y- yes, they do. If if that's, um, obviously, the participant may have had to move off country for whatever the reasons as you mentioned. If part of their goals within their plan is to keep connected to country. Um, we can and do provide funding for return to country um trips. There's a lot that goes into the, the, not only the the eligibility, as you said, but putting that in the person's plan, but. There is, and I think Beth Walker mentioned this earlier in the week. Um, around the logistical coordination that we often work with the participant and the providers on. Um, uh, can I give you an example? Counsel, would that, would that be useful? I was talking to my service delivery director in Darwin recently about an example of. A participant who had moved into into Darwin, uh, they were in a supported independent living. Um, they, they were in a wheelchair and they required um registered nurse care most of the day. And they were going back to country for ceremony. And we had to work with the registered nurses, um, a chartered flight, because it was, it wasn't, wasn't a drivable. Making sure the wheelchair can fit on the plane, um, supports for the registered nurse when they're back in community for the period of time, so servicing accommodation. Uh, and return trip. And so we actually had to build out a quote for that. It was somewhere in the vicinity of twenty to thirty thousand dollars for a return. To country trip like that. So that's just some of the complexities that our team will work with. Um, to make sure that we can support those return to country trips, um, where they do, um, where they are part of the. The participants' goals. Um. It is an area that um certainly my, my team here in the Northern Territory said it would be good to have some better policy clarification from us on that. Um, and I think that's come through the hearing a bit this week also.
Can I take you to that? Because I was intending to go there. Let me go back a step.
Sure.
You've heard the evidence we've been referring to. I won't repeat that. The reasons for having. A return to country seem to fall into the category of spiritual reasons, family reasons, cultural reasons. Health and medical, psychological, and there might be permutations of all of those. I take it from your evidence that the N D I A accepts as a general proposition. That there is great benefit for certain participants returning to country.
Yes.
Is that acceptance to the level that that is an entitlement? Or is it something that will be a case-by-case basis?
Um. We don't internally use the word entitlement in the agency. We'll, we'll use reasonable and necessary.
Yes.
For the participant. Um, so where it's reasonable and necessary based on their goals and their situation. Um, that is certainly something that we should be finding in the plan.
And the expression reasonable and necessary suggests to a lawyer discretion. What's reasonable, what's necessary. And you were elaborating on some of the factors you take into account. There are some situations where the cost of a single trip to country is very large, as you just indicated.
Yes, that's correct.
Presumably, there are other people with disability that don't require all the ancillary.
No.
Support. Is cost a factor?
Um.
Termining?
Sorry, counsel, there is a value for money um aspect to reasonable and necessary decision-making as well. Um, so you think about um a return to country trip that might cost twenty or thirty thousand dollars. What's the value for money? How many of trips per year would a policy setting provide for that? Because there could be quite a lot of ceremony. Um, so that, and we have to take all those things into consideration. Um, one of the other key considerations is if a person is in, uh, has a behavior support specialist. Uh, and a, and funding in their plan for that. Um, can we be assured in community that those right supports are put around the participant as well in case? So there's no risk to the participant or community. So. We have to work and get approval from the behavior support specialist to make sure that that's supported when they go back to country for a period of time as well.
Let's take two examples. Participant A, the dollar cost of a return to country trip, five hundred dollars. Participant B, thirty thousand dollars. Ideal world, you might want four trips in a year. You're dealing with a hundred and twenty thousand compared to two thousand. How does your organization manage that analysis when you're confronted with those two hypothetical applications for inclusion in a plan?
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of um complex factors that go into those in vigilized decisions. Um, we use our um. Our senior um directors and who, my senior, senior director in the Northern Territory. Um, she's a, a great larriker woman and very, very experienced with, with these sorts of matters, and she'll be actively involved in talking to the participants and the communities around those sorts of. Decisions people would need to make in the trade-offs. We'd also need to, is it feasible for the person to go to country four times a year? And leave their seal supports in in Darwin for argument's sake? And what, what risk might that provide to the health? Uh, if they're not getting those. So there's a range of factors that need to be considered uh in all of those um examples. Of course, if. If the person, say, the, in the, in the, the example, um, say, in Alice Springs, people might have moved in from community and it's a four-wheel-drive trip. It's not, not, it's much easier for them to go back to country. And in fact, they can go and do an overnight camp and go some shooting or hunting. We could actually just find that through their social community participation rather than a return to country trip.
The thirty thousand dollar example I gave you, and I hesitate to use the word, it sounds like a very complex analysis. Or to use a neutral word because of your aversion to complexity, Mr. Norton, a complicated process.
Sorry.
You accept, I think, from what you've said, that there is a lack of guidelines. That are available to a participant who's seeking that sort of support in their plan. Is that right?
In, in those more, um, I hate to use the word, but complex examples, yes. Um, where it's social community participation, it's, and it's, it's quite easily, it's, it's a lower cost item. It's more regularly available. Because there's plenty of four-wheel drives that you can do country trips as part of community participation. It is an area, um, and speaking to my staff, that they would welcome some more wraparound policy thinking of this too.
And have you accepted the suggestion that that would be useful?
Yes, absolutely.
And what's your timeline to prepare some guidelines in relation to this issue?
We'll, we'll, we'll start that uh over, over the coming months. Uh, we also need to talk to the sector, people like. You know, Beth Walker and the Public Guardian, other people who are quite experienced in this, in this space. With, there's a few people who'd like to involve in some of that policy thinking.
Do you recall that part of Beth Walker's evidence where she reported? N D I A staff regarding the return to country as a quote holiday, unquote?
I did hear that reference.
What was your reaction? Let's assume that that was an accurate reporting of what was said, then, Miss Walker, what would be your reaction to your staff referring to return to country as a holiday?
I don't think that's appropriate.
Why not?
It's certainly not how I think of it. I think we've had the benefits um very strongly this week around why that connection to country and community is really important.
And you accept that those benefits may be hard to quantify, but they nonetheless quite powerful?
Oh, ver- very much so, yeah.
Is there room for some pooling, perhaps? Uh, if, for example, there are several people from the same remote community. Who may be in a regional center or perhaps even in two separate regional centers. Might there not be an opportunity if it would cost thirty thousand dollars for one trip to combine two or three? Obviously, there's some logistical issues. But are those sorts of issues being considered?
Yes, yeah, it's a really good point, Chair, where we can, because there might be some um community members all in Darwin who have to go back to country. For the same ceremony, we'll try and work out uh options for that where it's, where it's possible. It's a good point.
There was evidence given this week, I think from Emily, talking about social supports. Put in the context that some support is, to use my term, very tangible and almost measurable. Because it relates to an aspect of the disability. But some other supports are much less tangible, aren't they, in terms of where the support and benefit is?
Potentially. I'm, I'm not sure of the line of question here. Sorry, in Emily's evidence.
Let me just pick that up for you. In the N D I A interaction records, a planner told Emily that the N D I A would not fund Emily. To go to Alice Springs to go shopping for new clothes because, quote, it is a holiday and the N D I S does not fund holidays, unquote. Assuming that evidence to be accurate for purposes of this question. When one goes to the N D I S Social and Recreation Supports Operational Guideline. Which appears at hearing bundle C, tab eighty-seven. It states, social and recreation activities can include things like going out to the movies or going places for fun, such as shopping. Do you accept that's what the guideline says?
Yes, yes.
And appreciating that all circumstances are different. It was within the guidelines as they stood, that her application should have been treated within that guideline, wasn't it?
Well, without knowing the exact details, then.
Yeah.
That, that could be the case, yes.
So, do you have any idea where the idea came for staff to say, we do not fund the holidays?
Yeah, so there are, within the um N D S rules and operational guidelines, the concept of everyday expenses.
Mm-hmm.
So the N D S funds the reasonable and necessary disability supports the person needs, but not for everyday items, that is. You know, so a good example, counsel, is we won't buy a person a car. But we will fund the modification of the car, because a car can be considered an everyday expense. We may support a person to go to a football match at the M C G or wherever, but we won't pay for their ticket. but we won't pay for their ticket to get into the game. We'll fund the support worker to get them there and take them home. So they're the sorts of everyday items that we regularly fund is your support to engage in that activity. But for some people, the cost of the activity may be an everyday item. So we might support you to go to the supermarket to do your shopping, but the cost of your groceries, it's an everyday item. That's not funded out of your N D S plan.
So you support the accessibility
Yes.
to the activity, but not the cost necessarily of the activity itself.
Yeah, in some, I, I hope I've made them reasonable clear in those examples, but yes, that's what, what we usually fund.
And so in the example of Emily, you would support Emily's transport costs to Alice Springs because there was no other transport available. Is that the general idea we're looking at?
Yeah, so Emily, because of her disability, isn't able to drive herself, so the disability is the factor. So we would support her in the transport that she needs so she can engage in those activities. But when she's in Alice Springs, obviously, the shopping is something she would support herself.
To that extent, it's not simply a question of shopping, because depending on the community where someone comes from, they just may not be available. The everyday goods and services that are available in bigger areas.
With that, I'm not aware of the items in every single community, but then that might be some other, I'm, I'm sure people in remote communities will come into Alice Springs or Tenant Creek or Darwin to get some essential services and and supports at times, councillor, yes.
Can I ask you about the question of utilisation of planned funds? We've discussed underutilisation in one respect. It seems suggested in some of the evidence that, to use my term, use it or lose it. If something provisioned is in a plan over one or two plans and it's not spent. Some people have been told that if they don't spend it, it'll be withdrawn. I was wondering if we had a discussion about that, about, in a more sophisticated way, how you treat that issue? And whether it does ever get to the point of use it or lose it.
I've had, had a conversation around that. Use it or lose it is not a term in any of our guidance or policies.
Appreciate that, but just trying to use simple English.
Yeah, I don't, just, just so for, for the commission's experience, it's not something that we consider. In fact, over the last two years, we've seen some pretty significant impacts on plans because of inability to access supports due to COVID. And we've been really conscious of that. To where participants have come to a point and said, I know I couldn't access all of these supports because during COVID for four months in Melbourne, access to my day programme stopped. So all of those things are very well aware and we're very attuned to those. Those things continue to be funded in each subsequent plan where it stays reasonable and necessary. It's certainly not a, a concept, because you didn't access that support, we're going to take that away from you. Kids and needs the supports in the plans to sort of generate the, you know, the, the demand for the market. So we fund what is required. If there is an issue in that fund not being sourced, that becomes a market issue, not a reasonable and necessary decision in an individual's plan. And we're quite clear in our guidance around that.
Ms Pepalopoulos, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I'd agree with Scott that the plan, plans are made on the basis of what's reasonable and necessary for that participant. And it's really important for us to understand the need to see what, what is in the plans in terms of reasonable and necessary supports. And, and, and I would, I would agree that we, it would be not, not good practice to remove something from someone's plan if they live in a community where those supports have not been available today. It's not their fault that they couldn't access it. And, and further to that, it removes a source of information for us about what they actually need. So, yeah, I would, I would, I would hope that that's not happening.
In respect to support coordinators and planners, it seems that on many occasions, they're operating from locations quite remote from where the participant lives. Put aside the question of COVID. Shouldn't there be a requirement that any support coordinator or any planner have visited the particular community and spoken face to face with the participant on a reasonably regular basis?
I'll, I'll start with the planners and kids that might talk about support coordination. Yes, ideally, we would like to have a much better national presence across multiple locations. We, we have planning teams in Thursday Island, Weeper, Tenant Creek, Broome, here in Alice, many regional towns, Mount Isa, and I'm going to miss them all, but we don't have every single community covered, of course, council. There's about eighty five planners across the national network who service specifically remote. Some are based in those towns and some are like a big team in Alice and a big team in Darwin who service the, the various communities. And they'll factor their visits in around wet seasons and availability and other things. So they might do more community visits in a condensed period of time in the northern parts of the country, in the dry season, and then do more in the southern parts outside of the, in the wet season for argument's sake. So that they'll, they'll manage their time. We would like to have more staff in locations. In Nullanderry, where we've got a presence, the only way we could keep the staff, staff members there was to actually subsidise housing rental. It's so expensive, there's limited properties, so we actually rent, subsidise a rental property for our staff there. We're struggling to maintain staff in Broome because of the private rental market there. It's eight hundred to a thousand dollars a week for a basic property. And if you're in a, you know, a level APS four or five level planner, that's a lot of your disposable income going to rent. So there are challenges around housing that we face, like everyone faces. As I mentioned, we've, we've tried to recruit into Fitzroy for about two years, sorry, crossing Fitzroy Valley. And we've been unable to, to maintain a staff member there because of, it's, it's a very tough labour market and there's not a lot of housing supply. So we're, we're at the, we're at those other factors as well. We are continuing to look at identified positions in locations where we would like to increase our footprint of our remote planners. And that's something that we're, we're very conscious of trying to grow that team over the, over the coming year to do that. Up, we absolutely agree the importance of having planners who visit communities, who understand communities, who work with our remote community connectors as, as an important part of the, of the N D S way.
And with regard to support coordinators, yes, similarly, it would be ideal if support coordinators could live and work near the participants who they represent. If that helps to build trust, build relationships and would, would allow, enable the support coordinator to, to do a better job, I think, of what, monitoring the participant's plan and connecting them to supports and understanding their circumstances and the, the situation in that market, so that, that is ideal. And we do see support coordination generally as one of the healthier aspects of our remote and very remote markets in terms of availability of, of, of local support coordinators. Many times, that's because it's been one of the areas where Aboriginal community controlled health organisations have first commenced N D I S service delivery. Many of them start with support coordination as a nice first step. And so that's been great. It's, it's also important that there are options that are not local to help meet demand from, if there's not enough local support coordinators, that, that it is the kind of service that can be delivered over video or phone call. It might not be ideal, but it's possible. And there are many great, high quality support coordinators who can offer still a great service in that way. And so the important thing is the participant has a choice around who they engage. And if that support coordinator is not meeting their needs, they can look around and get advice from other people, other participants, and try another service until they find something that suits them.
You've heard evidence from Joan and others to the effect that, in their view, support coordinators should take a more case management role. Do you have any views about that proposition?
Case management is not a concept that we use in the N D I S.
What would be your equivalent, which would describe the activities involved with case management?
We, we wrap a, a number of supports around a person. So we start from the, the needs and, and wants of, of the particular individual. And then we look at what, what are their risk factors and what supports do they need to help them achieve their goals in life? And so for, for most people, you know, they, for many people, they might only need some minimal support or some informal supports. Others could benefit from a bit of support coordination or a lot of support coordination. And that reasonable and necessary decision is made for them. But for our participants with the most complex needs, we do have a complex support needs pathway in the N D I S where planners work more intensively and more closely with a person's support coordinator to, to manage risk around that, that person's circumstances. And there are also three levels of support coordination that can be, can be included in someone's plan. So level two is the most common, level one is quite uncommon, but level three is a specialist support coordinator. And for someone who, who has some complex needs or some complex circumstances, we can certainly bring in a level three and, and that person will work more, more like a case manager, although we don't call it that.
If a support coordinator is helping a participant in relation to housing issues or general health issues, are they eligible to make a claim for the time they've been doing that?
Yes, as long as the, the activity that they're claiming for has been agreed by the participant and relates to that participant's disability, then that's appropriate, yes.
At a fundamental level, what's the philosophical justification for having a planner and a support coordinator? Why can't those roles be one and the same?
The, the scheme design includes roles for intermediaries. So the planner is there to take the person up to that point of where they have a plan and they, they have a plan that includes, includes enough supports and funds to meet their reasonable and necessary needs. And then the design of the scheme then fundamentally is about that person then go, going out into the market and connecting with all the supports that they need. So in the idea of intermediaries was, was included because it was recognised that not every participant will be able to do that on, on their own. And they might need some support in order to connect to N D I S and other supports in order, in order to monitor and manage their plan and for someone to help broker supports for them. So we have a number of intermediaries. We have local area coordinators which are funded by the N D I A. We have early childhood, early intervention services also funded by the N D I A. And then we have plan managers, support coordinators and psychosocial recovery creatures who can all be purchased by the person through their plan and they make a choice about who they engage. So they can find someone who, who suits them and who they can have a good relationship with.
But the designation of those different roles you described is the principle behind that, that there is otherwise a conflict of interest or some risk to the participant if those roles were combined in a single individual?
I, I don't know that it's about conflict of interest. I think it's more about going back to the original principle of the scheme, which is about individual choice and control to, to, to purchase, purchase access whatever, whatever meets your own needs without necessarily someone from the government walking alongside you or being part of that with you. And, you know, and if, and many of our participants wouldn't, wouldn't want that. They do just want to take their plan and go away and, and spend it and use it as, as, as they need to.
Ms Pepalopoulos, if we're dealing with a First Nations person in a remote community and they don't have face to face contact with their coordinator, is it not likely to be very confusing having a multiple of people involved from their perspective? Whereas having a single person would provide at least a level of clarity about who they were dealing with?
Yeah, look, we, we would see a support coordinator in that situation as being the key person in that person's life. They generally wouldn't speak to the N D I S or to the planners on a regular basis. Generally, that would be around plan reviews. And so that, once the person has their plan, the, the N D I A itself generally takes a step back. And the, the person is supported by their support coordinator. And we would really expect that a support coordinator takes the time to get to know that person and build a relationship, build trust. And so that person knows that they can go to that support coordinator for anything they need.
Would it be your experience that if there was a single person, that would be most appropriately an Ako or an Acho in those communities?
Akos and Achos are very, very well placed to provide support coordination because they have an existing footprint. They know the community, they know the individuals, they have cultural competency. And, and it's fantastic that we are seeing, as I said, many Achos and Akos entering that part of N D I S service delivery. But we also see diversity and choice is really important. And so I, I, I like to see healthy markets where there are choices for people as to who their support coordinator is. And that, I, I think that keeps the existing support coordinators on their toes. Because if they are not providing a good service, there is that, that option for participants to go and choose somebody else.
And that involves choice, I appreciate, but of course, if a coordinator is inept, you have to assume the participant can recognise ineptness.
Yeah, I think that's, that's absolutely right. And a lot of our work needs to go into empowering participants to understand what they should expect from their support coordinator. And some of our recent work in my team in the last few months has been about that. We've had, we've released a paper end of last year around what the expectations are of a support coordinator. Therefore, four roles and addressing other issues. We've released a lot of information on the web and we've also held workshops for providers, support coordinators, partners and participants, which were really well attended. And we've got some great follow up that we've got planned with participants. In addition to that, in the market interventions that my team work on in remote and very remote markets, we recognise how important support coordinators are to make, as a, as a key player in that market to make sure that participants are receiving the supports they need. And therefore, we work really closely with support coordinators. We recognise usually there are some great ones, but others who really could benefit from development. And we put a lot of investment into each of our projects, into building the capability of support coordinators so that they can better meet expectations of participants.
But looking from the perspective of a participant, what do they measure performance against? what do they measure performance against?
The participant, um, should be, uh, thinking about what is it that I want out of this person. Um, and support coordinators over the last few years, their, their exact role has been, um, a little bit unclear. We've had a lot of feedback from our consultation about what, what really is the support coordinator there to do. Um, and, and understandably, then it's hard for a participant to know what they should be expecting. Um, but we, uh, we've been remedying that, um, through our recent work, as I explained.
It's more than hard. I suggest that in those circumstances, it's impossible. Let me give you an example unrelated to this inquiry. When I started in legal practice, there were scales of fees for lots of work done by lawyers. That meant that the ordinary person on the street, unsophisticated in the law, would know generally what a service would cost, how much a conveyance would cost. Then we came to the age of cartels and anti-competitive behaviour and A-triple Cs. You said, you can't do that because that's against the public interest. And for the benefit of my colleagues behind me, I am grossly oversimplifying this. And we now have a situation where somebody off the street has no idea what a lawyer should charge them. Aren't we in a similar situation here where most participants in these remote communities have no capacity to determine whether the services provided by the coordinator are up to scratch or not? They have no benchmark or experience to measure against.
Uh, look, a few things there. Firstly, we do have pricing arrangements and price limits in place for support coordination. Um, secondly, I, I think from the evidence that I, I've heard this week and, and the consultations that I've done through my team over the last couple of years, um, people know when it's not working, that's for sure. They know when they're, they're not, um, getting their needs met. And we've had examples of, um, witnesses this week talking about, I thought my support coordinator was supposed to be helping me get this wheelchair, but I, I, I wasn't sure. So you can, you can understand that, that they are dissatisfied. I think the, the problem is about that, um, because the support coordinator is can be the key person in their life that's helping them navigate the NDIS. I'm not sure that they know how to remedy it or how to talk to that support coordinator about that issue.
And even if they had concerns about the performance of the support coordinator, what do they do about it? It's obvious that they can seek another one, but what skills or knowledge do they have to firstly realise that they can change and secondly, not end up with somebody similarly inept?
Uh, yeah, the, um, the, the planner, when they're, uh, setting up the participant with their plan, if they've allocated support coordination funding in the plan, the planner will explain to them, um, you now need to choose a support coordinator. Here are the kinds of, um, things you might want to look for. And here are some support coordinators who we know about in your area. The planner doesn't choose for them, the planner doesn't recommend, the planner, um, will show them options. Um, and then the, the participant will nominate, um, okay, um, I, I think I'm interested in you know, support coordinator A, and then after that, support coordinator B and support coordinator C. They kind of rank them and our system sends out a request for service to make sure that that connection happens.
So is that one of the roles of the planner?
To, eh, to help educate the participant about how to connect with a support coordinator.
Thank you. Ms. McNaughton, can I raise a separate issue? There's been reference during the week about registration of service providers and various providers choosing to not seek registration. What does the NDIA see as the benefit of registering providers?
Um, so there's a, there's a couple of, um, aspects to that. One is registered service providers then come under the regulator in terms of the National Quality and Safeguards Commission. So, um, that affords participants the protection in a way of the regulator for reg- registered service providers. And the registered service providers will also operate within our price guide, which gives participants certainty, choice. Um, so that's one of the main benefits of, of registered service providers. Uh, and where we say the protection for participants around price and quality safeguarding.
And that's based on a general consumer protection model of regulation and other aspects of the community?
Yes.
And yet, under the scheme, unregistered providers are entitled to certain roles, some limitations. Why does the NDIS believe that it's acceptable to have unregistered providers, given your view about the value of registration?
Yeah, so, so many of our unregistered providers are also got other registrative, um, regulations they comply with. So if you're a, um, a speech pathologist and you're not registered with us, you've got other regulatory bodies that you must comply with, uh, anyway. And so a range of our health providers may choose to operate as not a NDIS registered service provider because they've got their own professional bodies that they remain registered with anyway. Um, some other, other, um, type of, um, disability care activities might be home maintenance or gardening services where, um, those, those, um, providers choose to not, um, go through the process of registration because it's quite a light touch service they can operate within plan management or self-management.
In a nutshell, if you're running a mowing service, you probably won't cause much risk to the participant. Is that right?
Um, yes, that's right.
Those that have remained unregistered that have given evidence in this inquiry have pointed to two overriding factors. One, the cost of registration and auditing. And two, their perception that gives them less flexibility in providing their services. Can I be of interest with the question of cost? Does the NDIA monitor the overhead cost of obtaining registration and maintaining it?
Um, counsel, I'm going to go way outside my, um, um, area of focus here because those questions are for the commission who, who look at regulate, regulation. I don't actually know the costs involved in that or what requirements providers have. Sorry. So I'd best not give a, an answer to that because I'm not sure.
Well, we certainly heard from some witnesses the idea of spending $7,000 on an audit before they've even got a client. And Ms. Papadopoulos, do you have any knowledge of that area?
Uh, it, it is through our, um, pricing, uh, annual pricing reviews, we review, uh, a range of overhead costs that, um, providers in the NDIS have. And I would assume that the cost of registration is covered, uh, in that, um, in that calculation of overheads and then feeds into ultimately, um, the price limit that is set. Um, however, recognising that not all, uh, providers are registered, I'm not sure to what extent that's taken into account.
And the second issue, the perception that being unregistered gives the provider more flexibility in how they provide their service. Do you have any observation on that?
The, the main, uh, flexibility, uh, it offers is it allows, um, them to provide, uh, services to all, um, kinds of participants. So whether they're self-managed, plan managed or agency managed, um, oh, sorry. Um, registration offers, um, registration means you can offer services to all three, um, types of plan management. But if you are, um, if you're a participant who's agency managed, you can't access registered providers, uh, unregistered providers, you can only access registered providers. So, um, it's certainly a consideration of a provider who's deciding whether they should register or not. Um, they would look at certainly what's, what's a common type of plan management with the kinds of participants in the market that they wanted to service.
And what requirements are there for a support coordinator?
Support coordinators have to be registered to provide level three support coordination, but not for level one or level two. Um, but we, um, the level of registration for support coordinators, I believe, is a- around seventy percent or so that are choosing to be registered.
But are there any, um, criteria that must be satisfied for a support coordinator who is not registered?
They must comply with the, uh, code of conduct. So any provider who's, uh, providing services under the NDIS and claiming from plans must, um, comply.
No, but, but I'm, I'm talking about threshold criteria, not, uh, standard. You have to adhere to once you are a support coordinator.
Uh, not in terms of threshold criteria in order to enter the market. Um, however, when you're claiming from plans, um, you, there, there's a, a range of requirements as to how you bill and what you bill for, um, that, um, yeah, that provides, um, some structure around how they're operating and what they're, what they're offering.
What proportion of participants in these remote communities are plan managed as opposed to agency managed?
Um, I believe it's in the seventy, more than seventy percent. Um, is my understanding as compared to forty-four percent.
Seventy percent are?
Yeah, plan managed.
Plan managed and the remainder agency managed.
The remainder would be largely agency managed and there'll be some who would be self-managed.
Yes. And in respect to planners and support coordinators, do they have to undertake any mandatory training in relation to the communities in which they're providing their services?
Uh, support coordinators? No mandatory training. Uh, if they're registered, they have to do some mandatory modules, um, which might, um, include some general aspects of cultural competency. I'm not sure what the content is, but with regards to a particular community, no, that would be a provider's prerogative, um, in order to promote to participants the quality of the service that they offer. Um, they, they should be incentivised to, um, do that for themselves.
So in those terms, if they had that sort of expertise or training, that would be a selling point that they could use.
Absolutely.
Papadopoulos, when people mention learning modules, I've become a little sceptical. Are we talking about somebody going online for forty-five minutes and going through some slides? Followed by a few questions at the end, or are we talking about a system where they're being tested in a real sense as to their understanding of what they've seen?
Um, I haven't undertaken it myself. I haven't seen it, um, but it's a requirement of the, um, Quality and Safeguards Commission. I understand the modules set out the expectations, but also, um, set, you know, link, I think, to the audit that you undertake. So it becomes the foundation of what your quality regime is and what you'll be audited against.
In respect to the NDIA practice guide in relation to assisting communication, this may be a matter of Mr. McNaughton. It says in broad terms that NDIS, uh, staff are responsible to find a First Nations interpreter, strike translator in certain circumstances. How does one determine whether or not that guideline is being followed?
Yeah, so, um, I'll give you an example. Our, our remote planning team in the Northern Territory, uh, here based out of Darwin and Alice Springs, they have to get what's called their remote passport in an internal term. Um, and it means you're, um, you have the right credentials to go into remote communities, covers things like full-wheel drive training, first aid training. Um, there is a, in addition to our, um, generic cultural awareness, cultural competency training, there's a more detailed, um, cultural, um, competency, um, learning that is delivered by our First Nations staff in Darwin. And that goes into a lot more of the detail around communities, um, and the communities that they're, uh, will be servicing. What we then do is if, um, you're going to a community, uh, I'll say if you're going to, uh, Whatair or Nulland Boy, we'll engage with the local community representatives to understand what's happening in community at that point of time. Is there any ceremony? Is there any sorry business, men's business? And so then we relate that back to the team before they go. Um, and so that, and then who are we going to see in community for that visit? Who needs interpreters? Um, many of my staff speak multiple languages. Or if not, can, is the remote community connector available who will interpret? Or do we need to, um, get a, a local interpreter and pay for that for the trip? So we prepare all of that well in advance before the team go. There's a lot of safety and cultural protocols that go into visiting communities. Um, and that becomes part of the remote team at a Darwin who will support that and also in Alice Springs. Just give a bit of example about before we go to community, how we plan for that.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask the question, um, because we've heard a lot about cultural competency training, um, including the consortium from the Kimberley where local people do that training for forty-five minutes. Um, has there been any thinking done within the NDIA? Or if you know or are aware of certified, uh, cultural capability training in the Commonwealth?
But commissioner, it's, I'm not aware of any certified, um, training, um, that you refer to, but it's certainly something that we've been thinking about with our First Nations employee staff, developing a much stronger curriculum um, for us internally that might involve different external, um, um, agencies to help with the delivery of that. I think that's exactly where we, we would like to go for our staff as well as our partners in the community.
Um, I'm just thinking about, for example, in the, um, in legal services and they might do community legal education.
Yeah.
Um, and they often are done by lawyers.
Hmm.
People who have got training.
Yeah.
Um, recognised in the profession. And yet you've got Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people who have lived experience, who worked in organisations, worked in the field. And I'm not dismissing their experience, but there's a sliding scale of quality probably across Australia. And they seem, these are training programmes seem to pop up constantly, um, in the Commonwealth.
Hmm.
But, um, for example, we've got the Australian Institute of Company Directors. Now, you know, if someone who carries that recognition, there is a, an understanding of the, um, compliance and the quality of that person um, in, in the business community. And, um, it, it does concern me that there seems to be a, a, a kind of more of an informal learning as opposed to, these are really, these are really serious topics that have serious implications on someone who's not Indigenous going into remote communities. And online learning or even an in-house learning may not necessarily be ideal in mitigating risks to First Nations people who are receiving that service from someone who may not have a lot of experience. So clearly monitoring and making sure that people are complying with cultural protocols and so forth. But it does concern me that, uh, in this country, we do have courses through universities. Um, I've done a course, um, to have that foundation to work in the public service.
Yeah.
Um, and yet it's, it's, it's almost a, it's misleading around the depth that's needed. And, um, and I'm, I'm talking to someone who would understand that because of your contact with remote community. So, uh, is that something that the NDIA may explore? Because it certainly, um, opens up opportunities for recognition of prior learning of people who, who have done that, um, commitment of learning and not necessarily relying on a base level of forty-five minutes of training.
No, counsel, I think in- incredibly, um, important points and, um, we're very open to exploring. Um, what is the, what is the next step in terms of, um, the, the cultural competency, a, a stronger curriculum around working with First Nations people, especially into remote? Um, and, uh, that's definitely something that we will, we're happy to explore more and invest in.
Um, and just one more, uh, following on is my experience working in remote communities and indeed in NPY Women's Council, we started exploring this idea of having a uh, a capability framework, um, in relation to management. I think there's a lot of, uh, lots, a lot to, to benefit from. uh, lots, a lot to to benefit from, from a cultural capability framework as in uh, the the levels of responsibility uh, cascading down from senior levels down, including inside the NDIA, around the uh, performance of staff members as well as those that work in the field and even including First Nations people. Um, because what what has come through this week is a level of inconsistency. Um, and there needs to be, I think, much more of certainty around capability of working in this area, particularly with First Nations people. Uh, I point to, um, I point to the witnesses this this week. You've you've got witnesses who who would have quite strong educational backgrounds, English as a first language. Then you've those with disability, non-verbal.
Hmm.
Um, or reluctant to speak up. And so again, it's a broad spectrum of self-determination. So I can't rely on the individual actually being proactive. It's actually the service provider. I'll put it that way. So thank, thank you. Thanks.
No, I appreciate, appreciate that, counsel, commissioner. Thank you.
Mr. Griffin, can I just inquire what likely cause of events from a temporal point of view?
You can indeed.
Be from this point?
I've concluded my questions of these two witnesses.
You have?
I have.
Ah.
And before I resume my seat, can I take the opportunity to acknowledge Mr. Matt Templeton of Cairns Charts Maps for his work to prepare the maps that we've been using today and during the week? He gave priority to our late requests and we understand, particularly with those following the hearing online, it's been a great assistance to understand the context in which the evidence was given.
Thank you very much, Mr. Griffin. Um, I'll ask first Commissioner McEwan if you have any questions.
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, the one topic I'd like to ask both of you about is the interface between the NDIS and other, you know, government department and program. I know it's a big topic. What are the particular learning, what are what are the particular specific learning or the major learning from a First Nation remote perspective in your work and the observation? So you talked a bit about transport. The example you gave, you fund someone to go back to country. That big, the question is what the Northern Territory doing about public transport? So do you have some ideas that you can give us about the interface?
Yeah, do you understand? Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, the main mainstream interface, um, is always a, uh, an area that we're we're working closely with our, um, state and territory colleagues. Transport is a good example. Um, there are just very limited public transport or accessible transport in anywhere really outside of Darwin in in, um, in the Northern Territory. So that's a a real area of focus. Schools, um, the transition from early childhood into schools is really important. The provision of appropriate disability supports in the school to keep children engaged in the school settings, really important area of focus for us. Um, the other one is around community mental health. Importance of, um, you know, states and territories continues very well in acute mental health, but we we do see there's a real important need for community mental health supports for people, not only participants, but people who might have a psychosocial disability who may not be a participant of the scheme. The ability to access community mental health supports in those communities are really important areas, um, of focus for us. Uh, and I know ministers as well. Thanks, Commissioner.
And, uh, sorry, I'll just add to that from a, um, from a policy point of view, we're strongly engaged in closing the gap. So we have representation, uh, from the NDIA on various working groups around closing the gap and on personally on the, uh, the working group. Um, when when we meet, um, there's opportunity from representatives from different, um, government departments to present about their initiatives and there's always really good engagement and discussion about how we can learn and um, adopt their ideas and, uh, use them in our own organizations. So that's been fantastic. Um, uh, we we, my team meets with DSS on a monthly basis and they're engaged in um, other initiatives that complement our work in remote markets. So we talk about the building the local care workforce, which is a sixty million dollar initiative. Uh, we talk about the workforce strategy, um, and that we've also been talking about models of integrated care potentially. So how NDIS services can work better with, uh, Veterans Affairs and Health Services in particular communities? Because, um, an integrated approach, you know, really, really has to be considered. So that's been really promising. And in addition, we have, um, good relationships with our state and territory government counterparts. They're always involved in our um, in our market interventions. Um, and a great example is the South Australian Government and their commitment in the APY lands. They've, um, they've walked alongside us the whole time, um, been involved in in detail in most of what we've done there. And, um, we continue to talk about how their initiatives can, uh, can work hand in hand with our initiatives. So that the overall, uh, offering of of what we're doing in in APY lens is really well coordinated.
Perhaps to bring this to a close, is it fair to say that there is some promising practices among states and territory? Particularly from a rural or a remote point of view and a First Nation point of view? Or do you think we will continue to see what we might call the, you know, the shifting or the, you know, passing the buck, so to speak? But i- is it fair to say broadly that there are some promising practices at state and territory level? And perhaps other Commonwealth departments?
You in, well, um, I think the example that Kizza just gave in South Australia is a good one. We've had really good support from the Northern Territory Government here around places like the Nooka Trial and others. So, um, there are some promising things happening in some of those communities. Yes. And Commissioner, more work to be done, of course, but, um, there are some promising things.
And sorry, and state and territory governments are continue to invest, uh, in in initiatives that complement the NDIS, which is really, really great to see.
Thank you both and thank you for your evidence.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason, do you have any additional questions?
Um, I just want to say one thing, um, that I look forward to hearing through the Closing the Gap report uh, next year, more information from the NDIA. Um, and what's working, but also, uh, where work still needs to happen in activating those, um, relationships and uh, funding and supports, um, particularly in Northern Australia. Um, but I would just want to say a big thank you to both of you, Ms. Papadopoulos and Mr. Norton for your evidence um, over the last two days, um, and the attention that you've given to, uh, responding to the questions and also I mean, your, um, openness in terms of drawing on your own experiences. So, uh, it's such a critical area, uh, for First Nations communities to see this working. Um, you had witnesses, First Nations witnesses this week talking about the NDIS and the promise. Um, and we, uh, we heard from Emily Carter talking about the the issue of, uh, over-promising and under-delivering. And, um, so really from this Royal Commission, really looking to see um, positive reform and change in the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
One of the themes that has emerged that perhaps we haven't explored in detail concerns the understanding of the reasons for decisions. We've heard that, uh, people, First Nations people and those who may be supporting them consider that decisions are made, that they don't really understand, the reasoning is not clear. It's not clear why there might be inconsistencies between, apparently between one person's application or, uh, the contents of that person's plan and somebody else, somebody else's plan. The discussion today, I think reinforces that a lot of the criteria, both in the statute and as developed as policies by the NBIA allow for very considerable range of discretion. You can't get anything more general than the concept of reasonable and necessary. Uh, it's what, as I remarked before, that Julia Stone, uh, ca- categorized as a category of indeterminate reference. There's a dilemma here. The the dilemma is between flexibility, about which we've heard a great deal. Which involves individual discretion being exercised, for example, by planners who are effectively decision-makers. And then the alternative of trying to set out principles or rules specifically as possible, which then creates the risk of bureaucratization, inflexibility and so on. There's no easy answer to that, but it does occur to me that the concept of face-to-face communication with people during the currency of a plan. So that somebody, including a person with disability, First Nations person in a remote community, or that person's representative one way or another, can actually have a conversation with somebody about what's going on. And please explain to me, don't just give it to me in a letter that's drafted, uh, in standard form. I understand completely why letters are drafted in standard form. But there's an opportunity, or really an obligation. If people are to understand what is happening, they need to be able to communicate with a decision-maker or with somebody who can explain to them, and they have an opportunity to discuss it and perhaps even to negotiate. What we've got now is plans approved, planners made the decision, and then off you go with the support coordinator who may or may not be effective and may or may not be an effective advocate. It just seems to me that if there's some mechanism that we can, that can be introduced based upon the principles that we've been talking about of, um, the community and respect for culture and so on. But something, somebody and some presence there in the community, you'll be able to address a lot of these issues. It's just the remoteness of it and the impersonality of the decision-making process. It's fundamental to the operation of the law, judicial decisions. It's often said that the most important part of reasons for judgment is to explain to the losing party, not to the winning party. The winning party knows things are good, doesn't need to read the judgment. It's the losing party that needs to understand why they lost. And it's a similar principle here. And I just wonder whether there mightn't be some consideration given to have a process of communication with people in a language, in a, in a manner that can readily be understood, can assist in not just navigating, but understanding what's actually going on. It's just a thought.
No, I think, I think, uh, thank you, Chair. That that has come through very strongly this week, the need to be able to help First Nations people in remote, understand their plan, how they can use their plan, how they can access supports flexibly and the value of having someone there they can talk to, I think, is is key. I I agree with that totally. We need to work towards that.
Do you want to add anything?
I I would, I would just add that it's where we're heading as an agency generally for all participants. We hear that um, from all participants and, uh, there's a lot of work going on currently that will, um, uh, boost, uh, the implementation support that participants get. There's a lot of work around participant empowerment. We've got a great participant experience, um, division in our in our agency that's continuing to make investments in that regard. But, but, but I agree, it's, it's very, it's critical for the operation of the scheme that that our participants are empowered to spend their.
Can I just say something, Jane? No. Interrupting. Um, Ms. Papadopoulos, you have a really critical role. Um, perhaps something for you to take on board in terms of learning from this hearing is in terms of the terminology and language you use to start to inquire about First Nations words that actually can explain those words that you're saying. I know this is a public hearing and you're using words for the record, but even as public hearing, to have someone of your seniority actually use First Nations language, um, as a way of explaining the concept. That would just be an enormous, um, relief that someone of your seniority and caliber is actually practicing cultural capability. So, um, to the chair's point, which is communication.
Provided you don't use the word learning, as I have not accustomed myself to that word. Um, uh, just one final question for each of you. What have you learned this week that you didn't know before? What are the most important things, if any, that you learned from the evidence this week?
Oh, um, I I've personally found this week to be incredibly insightful. Um, and I made a point of coming here from the start and listening to all the witnesses and, um, a couple of things for me, um, a few witnesses said, um, the NDIS has made people better off. Which is, which is great, but there's a lot more work to be done. Um, that sometimes our policies and guidelines and practices seem to fit Sydney or Melbourne, but may not fit Nullanderry or Galawinku. And and we need to rethink some of those things. Um, and we need to spend more time communicating and listening, uh, to communities. Um, and there's probably a whole range of other things, uh, but there've been some of my key takeouts. Thanks, Chair.
Ms. Papadopoulos, do you want to comment?
Yes, I would. I'd I'd like to, um, thank everybody who's been involved in this week because it's been, um, a really um, important experience for me and and to to your, um, comments earlier, Commissioner. I I've learnt a lot, but it's just the start. I've got much more to learn and the gravity, the gravity of what we're working with um, has certainly hit me. It's been a very, very heavy week in that regard. I I take very seriously everything I've heard from the range of witnesses. Um, my, my teams work one-on-one with many of the organizations we've heard from and, um, they know participants and they have that experience on a daily basis and they share it with me and we talk about it all the time. But there's nothing like having a week immersing yourself in that, um, personal stories and personal experiences. That's, um, been transformational for me and I really look forward to taking everything away. Um, and, uh, I'm working with Scott and the rest of the agency to, um, take, take the scheme forward in the next phase and make make improvements.
Thank you. Mr. Hogg, I just want to check, do you wish to ask any questions?
Chair, I I don't think I want to ask any questions, but I might just indicate something that I know you're aware of. There are quite a number of questions that were asked this morning about registration and auditing of support coordinators and service providers. And I know you're aware that's not actually the responsibility of the NDIA. And so whilst these witnesses have done their best to answer those questions, I think as they indicated quite a number of times, it's not their responsibility, but there were some questions I think that flowed out of it and we will have the NDSC respond to those if that were assisted.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, ma'am, thank you both for your evidence. Um, uh, it's been quite a, a long time giving oral evidence and each of you has provided detailed uh, written statements. This kind of constructive dialogue is really very important. Uh, it's all very well for Royal Commissions or any other inquiries to make, uh, recommendations. That's very important and we will be doing that, but, uh, it's much better that there be a continuing process, uh, that is informed by a whole range of inquiries and insights. And, uh, I think on behalf of the Commissioners, we're grateful for your indication that you're prepared to take into account the matters that have risen in the evidence and the themes that have emerged during this week. So thank you very much. Mr. Griffin, I think that there are some closing directions.
There are, and I understand they were circulated to the parties this morning. But, um, and have you had a chance to consider them, Chair?
Yeah. Um, but what I will do is, uh, to read out the proposed, uh, directions. If any party represented, uh, wishes to make any comment or suggest any amendment, I'll give that opportunity once I've read, uh, the, uh, uh, directions and then they can be finalized. Uh, you 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 can by all means step down and do whatever you think you would like to do in Ellis Springs at lunchtime. Uh, the following of the directions that are proposed. One, any witness who took questions on notice during this hearing should provide his or her answers in writing to the office of the solicitor assisting the Royal Commission by twenty nine July, two thousand and twenty-two. The answers should be targeted and concise and not address additional or unnecessary matters. The answers should be targeted and concise and not address additional or unnecessary matters. Counsel assisting the Royal Commission may tender those responses into evidence. Two, by 5 August 2022, counsel assisting the Royal Commission will provide a list of all documents he wishes to tender into evidence, including responses to questions on notice on a confidential basis to the parties with leave to appear at this hearing. Three, parties with leave to appear should advise the Office of the Solicitor assisting by 12 August 2022 if they wish to suggest any additional documents for tendering by counsel assisting. At the same time, they should identify any parts of the documents to be tendered that they consider need to be removed before the documents are made public with reason. Four, counsel assisting will tender those documents into evidence which he considers appropriate and will do so in chambers by 9 September 2022. Five, counsel assisting the Royal Commission will prepare written submissions following the hearing. By 23 September 2022, these submissions will be provided on a confidential basis to parties with leave to appear and may be provided on the same basis to any witness or recipient of a procedural fairness letter from the Office of Solicitor assisting the Royal Commission in preparation for this hearing. Six, any responses to counsel assisting submission should be sent to the Office of Solicitor assisting by 7 October 2022. Those responses should be concise and should not include any additional evidence. Is there any represented party who wishes to comment on those proposed directions? If not, they are the directions then that I will make. And they provide the timetable for the further development arising out of this public hearing. Mr Griffin, is there anything further that you wish to say?
Not in relation to this hearing, but can I indicate that I understand the next public hearing of the Royal Commission will commence at 10 a.m. on Monday, the 29th of August in Parramatta, New South Wales.
Thank you, Mr Griffin. This has been a quite extraordinary hearing. And obviously, the Commissioners would wish and do thank everybody who's been involved in preparation and the con, in the preparation for the hearing and the conduct of the hearing. I just want to say something about the degree of preparation that goes into a hearing like this. This Royal Commission will hold in total about 30 public hearings. I have mentioned on previous occasions that an enormous amount of time, effort and skill goes into preparing each of these hearings. This involves not merely preparing evidence of the kind that one would expect to be brought forward in a Royal Commission, but enormous amount of, enormous amounts of attention and care to ensuring that witnesses, and in particular, of course, witnesses who are people with disability, can give their evidence safely without the risk of re-traumatisation and in an environment that allows them to tell their stories comfortably and clearly. These are matters that require a great deal of skill and effort and that is characteristic of each and every one of the hearings that were held. This hearing has been particularly challenging to prepare and it is a great credit to all those who have been involved that it has evolved in the way that it has. Throughout the course of the hearing, we've received evidence and heard stories about witnesses, their families and clients that the witness may support living in a variety of places in remote and very remote areas throughout Australia. These include in the Northern Territory, Ella Springs, Tennant Creek, Gumbalanya and Darwin. In Queensland, Arakoon, Cairns, Lockhart River, Mapoon, North Weeper, Thursday Island. In Western Australia, Broome, Fitzroy Crossing and the Fitzroy Valley, the Pilbara, many communities throughout the Kimberley region, including Beagle Bay, Bidjodunga, Derby, Kananara, Horse Creek. In South Australia, Anangu, Pidginchujara, Yankinchujara, that is the A P Y lands and the M P Y lands, which span across South Australia, Western Australia and the Northern Territory. It only takes a moment's reflection to appreciate the phenomenal amount of work involving travel, support, preparation that goes into obtaining evidence from communities scattered far and wide across Australia. And as we've heard during the week, present considerable challenges of one kind or another, not least getting there at a time of COVID and in the light of the difficulties that even things like regular weather patterns can create. I want to make that point because sometimes there is a view expressed and one can understand it readily, that it's a pity that the Royal Commission can't actually investigate through hearings even more matters than we have or will investigate in the 30 public hearings that we will hold. There are limits to what the Royal Commission can do and this hearing indicates just how much of the resources of the Royal Commission go into the preparation of just a single hearing. We are certainly going to do the best we can to cover as much of the terms of reference of the Royal Commission as is humanly possible, but this indicates just how much effort goes into the preparation of a hearing and this hearing in particular. I want to thank all of the witnesses who have given evidence. In particular, First Nations people have given evidence this week. There's been so impressive, so powerful and has generated so much very useful constructive discussion and ideas. We heard from Daisy, who was accompanied by her son Josiah. We heard from Ms Jodie Barney, the founder of Deaf Indigenous Community Consultancy. Mrs Kunmanara Smith, Margaret Smith, Ms Kim McCray, the Namok family, including Boise from Torres Strait. Ms Joanne Horton, founder and managing director of Creative Consulting Proprietary Limited. Mamiji Dehand, who gave evidence about her son Tristan. Jazika, who gave evidence about her sons with disability, Little Fella and Big Fella. Ms Stelli Jakamara, Topsy. Ms Ramita Jakamara, who gave evidence about her son, a person with disability. Mr Eric Bedford, Mudge, about whose evidence we heard this morning. Ms Emily Carter, the Chief Executive Officer, Manamwana Takura Women's Resource Centre. Paulette, Mr Damian Griffiths, the Chief Executive Officer, First Peoples Disability Network, who of course has given evidence at other hearings and contributed to the Commission in many ways. As has Auntie June Reema, the Deputy C E O of the First Peoples Disability Network, from whom we heard. Ms Patricia Turner, the Chief Executive Officer, National Aboriginal Controlled Health Organisation, N A T O. Ms Jenny Bedford, Chief Executive, Chief Operating Officer, Kimberley Aboriginal Medical Service. Ms Judy Brown, Chief Executive Officer, National Indigenous Australian Agency. We are extremely grateful to each of those witnesses who have contributed so much to this hearing and to our understanding of the issues that need to be addressed. The names that I've read out, of course, include First Nations people with disability. If I may refer to them as such, I know that there are issues concerning the use of the word disability within First Nations community, but just in order to use terminology in a consistent way as we have throughout the Royal Commission. We also heard evidence about other First Nations people with disability who couldn't participate in the hearing more directly. They included Betty and Ellen, two First Nations people with disability, who are the subject of guardianship orders. And I'm pleased to say that the Commissioners were able to meet with Betty and Ellen outside the hearing room. We heard about Little Fella and Big Fella, the two young First Nations boys with disability, whose mother Jazika shared their stories with the Royal Commission. Tristan, whose parents Mamangi Hand and Jeff Davis gave evidence and also participated in videos that were shown through the hearing. And Mudge shared with us evidence about his son Baba Boy. And Renita gave evidence about her son. We also heard from other witnesses and I won't go through them in detail, but we are grateful for the contributions that each and every one has made to this hearing. I want also to thank, and I, I won't do it in detail at the hearing, but there will be an opportunity shortly to express thanks to all of those members of staff, council, Office of Solicitor assisting, those who've provided support to witnesses, the interpreting teams who have not only done their usual sterling job, but have had to cope with a few additional complications in order to do the job on this occasion. To the I T people or an order who have done a magnificent job in ensuring that this hearing can take place successfully. To those who are responsible for the logistic arrangements that are complicated, that often involve an enormous amount of planning and coordination. And they have done a splendid job in ensuring that everybody who was meant to get here has got here and has been able to give their evidence and that we have been able to make contact with all of those who have given evidence remotely in the various communities. So we offer from the Commissioners our profound gratitude to everybody who's been involved in this hearing, which, as I said at the outset of these remarks, has been a really extraordinary hearing and one of great importance to the work of the Royal Commission. And I hope it proves to be the importance to the First Nations communities with which we have been concerned during this week. So thank you, everybody. We will now adjourn.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.